If we can go and get everyone in inside that can fit inside here, we'll go ahead and get started here. All right, at this time, I'd like to have Pastor Hammond step up here for our invocation, and please stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, on this day as we remember that the price for our freedom is extremely high, we give you thanks for the men and women who have served our country and sacrificed their lives so that we can live free. We acknowledge you in the center of our city's government tonight. We ask your blessings upon tonight's meeting. We ask that you grant your wisdom and direction to our elected officials, that they would have the courage to make the right decisions for every citizen of Los Banos. We ask that you help us to display the love toward one another that you have displayed toward us. May we all strive to live in unity and at peace with one another as we work toward a better Los Banos. I ask your blessing upon our elected officials and upon the leadership and staff of our city. We speak health to their bodies, peace and provision to their families, clarity to their minds, and their strength to do what is right in the sight of God and the people of our city. Open our eyes to see the many things we have in common instead of focusing on the few things that divide us. As we look forward to a new year with new possibilities, lead us down the path of righteousness for your name's sake, and may you receive all the praise, all the glory, and all the honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'll now call the meeting to order at 6:03 and remain standing for our pledge allegiance from Chief Breezy.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. We'll now turn to City Clerk Ms. Melanie for roll call. Here?
Here.
We have a quorum, and at this time, we will ask a consideration of approval of agenda, but please make note that Item 9, Certificates of Recognition, is being moved up on the agenda to be presented next before Item 5, Consideration of the Certificates and Votes of Municipal Election, November 8, 2022. And take a motion for a consideration of approval agenda. Mr. Jones?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Consideration and approval of agenda is passed, and we'll now go to Item Number 9, the Certificates of Recognition. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's been approved. Now we'll move to Item Number 9, Certificates of Recognition. Is Justin still here? Hi, you want to step down here, Justin? All right, thanks, Justin. This is Justin?
Ragginton.
Ragginton. Certificate of Recognition presented. Planning and Technician, Community and Economic Development Department. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banos and for being named Employee of the Month for the month of November 2022. Job well done, Justin.
Appreciate it.
Alicia?
This is a good friend of mine also, Alicia McLennan. Certificate of Recognition presented to you. In recognition of your selfless and acts of kindness you spread around our community, your efforts are appreciated and do not go unnoticed, and we appreciate the work that you put by putting yourself. Thank you.
None of the stuff that I do would be possible without the whole community pitching in. None of it. And Paul himself and his wife have been wonderful also with helping me feed and clothe the community. So thank you, everyone who's helped.
All right, the next item on the agenda, Item 5, Consideration of Certification of Votes of the Municipal Election, November 8, 2022. Item 8, City Council Resolution Number 6589, certifying the results of the Merced County General Election held in the city of Los Banos on November 8, 2022, as it pertains to the election of the mayor, city council members for Districts 2 and 3, and city clerk. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Ms. Lewis?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, the certification has passed. We'll now move to Item Number 6, The Administration of Oaths of Office to Elected Officials, and we'll turn to Ms. Melanie, the City Clerk. So, Mr. Paul, Mr. Begonia, Mr. Jones? All right, everybody. I see we have a packed house. Thank you all for coming. The next item on our agenda is City Council Resolution Number 6590. This is the Resolution of Commendation to Refugio... I'm sorry. Oh, we have to do a roll call. See, I'm getting ahead of myself already. All right, sorry about that. Now we're good? Yes? All right. All right, since you know what I'm about to say. So the next item is Item 8A, City Council Resolution Number 6590, the Resolution of Commendation to Refugio Yamas. The... Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 6590.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Councilmember Lewis? Second by Lewis? All in favor? Eyes have it. And we have the... Yes, yeah, absolutely. All right, if most of you know me, you know I don't need a microphone, but we're going to do this anyway. Refugio, you can... So it's my honor to present to you Resolution Number 6590, Resolution of Commendation to Refugio Yamas. Whereas Refugio Yamas was appointed as council member District 2 of the city of Los Banos on January 20, 2021, and whereas Refugio Yamas has faithfully served the city of Los Banos for the last two years as council member, and whereas by his devotion to his duties, Refugio Yamas has greatly contributed to the governmental process of the city of Los Banos. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Los Banos that they hereby express their sincere gratitude and appreciation to Refugio Yamas for his service to the city of Los Banos in his capacity as city council member. Be it further resolved that an unbound copy of this resolution be presented to Refugio. The foregoing resolution was adopted at a regular meeting of the city council in the city of Los Banos held the 7th day of December, 2022. All right? Did we need to vote on this one, since it's the second item? It's the second person. Do we need to... Okay. Didn't see him. I'm about to get my head on myself again.
Oh, see, you already know the rules.
All right, next up is Item 8B, City Council Resolution Number 6591, a Resolution of Commendation to Kimberly and Tomas. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Lambert? Oh, I'm sorry, it showed you first. Councilman Lewis? Thank you. Can I get a second? Councilmember Lambert? All those in favor? Aye. Eyes have it. And Kim is here, correct?
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna get my steps in. All right, Kim. Resolution Number 6591, Resolution of Commendation to Kimberly and Tomas. Whereas Kimberly and Tomas was appointed as Deputy City Treasurer of the city of Los Banos on October 22, 2009, and whereas Kimberly and Tomas was appointed as City Treasurer of the city of Los Banos on April 5, 2017. And whereas Kimberly and Tomas was elected as City Treasurer of the city of Los Banos on November 6, 2018, and whereas Kimberly and Tomas has faithfully served the city of Los Banos for the last 13 years as City Treasurer, and whereas by her devotion to her duties, Kimberly and Tomas has greatly contributed to the governmental process of the city of Los Banos. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council in the city of Los Banos that hereby express their sincere gratitude and appreciation to Kimberly and Tomas for her service to the city of Los Banos in her capacity as City Treasurer. Be it further resolved that an unbound copy of this resolution be presented to Kim at tonight's meeting. The foregoing resolution was adopted at a regular meeting in the city council in the city of Los Banos held on the 7th day of December, 2022. All right. Okay. Oop, just not working right? Trying to learn it as I go here. All right. Just one? Okay. Councilmember Lewis?
It's still on.
There we go. Okay. All right. All right, next item is Item Number 10, Reorganization of City Council, Selection of Mayor Pro Tem. And I guess I get to make the motion, original motion on this, is my understanding? Yes? Okay. I make the nomination? Okay. So my nomination for the position of Mayor Pro Tem, he's done an outstanding job with very little training in the time that he's served our city, and I'm nominating Kim Lambert to remain in that position. Is the item open for discussion? Councilmember Jones? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations. Mayor Pro Tem Lambert? All right, next item on the agenda, and I'm really going to try to get used to this whole looking down, looking at you thing, because anyway, is the Public Forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers for more information. Just a reminder to please silence your phones or turn them off while in the council chambers. At this time, I would like to invite the public to come forward and speak.
And ladies, and I assume we're still being televised, so I, the public that's at home, I'm Jim Valentine.
Jim, do you want to move the mic closer to you?
Okay. I'm Jim Valentine, resident of Los Banos. I'm also here representing the Los Banos Kiwanis Club. We've been doing a Christmas Eve dinner for, I'll say, the less fortunate. For this will be our 39th year. It's... I say Los Banos Kiwanis Club. We were involved from the very beginning. I think there's two of the members yet in Kiwanis that were there on First Meal, myself and Jim Paradiso. The... Two years ago, a terrible thing called COVID stepped in and interfered with us. So 2019 was our last year. Then 2021, we did a drive-through. It was successful. And... But there are things missing that we've always had, which was Santa Claus, toys for the kids, and so forth and so on. So with the approval of Fire Chief Tualla, I don't know if I pronounced that right, but he said I'll learn it before the Christmas is over. We are back at the fire station. We'll have our barbecue chicken, pasta, salad, roll, pie, and beverage. There'll be deliveries to the people that are shut in, and we've already got our list going pretty good. There'll be a sit-down portion from 11 to 2 o'clock. And the dinner is free to all, thanks to the generous individuals, organizations, and businesses in our community. Want to thank Police Chief Breezy and his commanders, or I want to ask Police Chief Breezy and his commanders to be alert as far as their officers while they're on duty that morning if they see anyone that could... If they see anyone that could use a meal, please send them to the fire station. Deliveries will also be available to those who are otherwise unable to attend the fire station. The, also, Mr. Wellman, with your permission, I will have some flyers out front that'll talk about the dinner and have our phone numbers on there and such. And that's about it. We've been, like I say, doing this for, this will be the 39th year. It's a labor-intensive thing. Anybody that wants to volunteer, we ask that they show up at the fire station, number one, at 10 o'clock on the 21st, excuse me, 24th. And we'll just, you know, we are always in need of additional funding. Those wishing to contribute toward the event can make donations to the Kiwanis Club at P.O. Box 380, Los Banos. Thank you and Merry Christmas, one and all. If you want to help, we'll gladly take anybody. So if there's no other questions, I will move on to someone else. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Yanis, City Council Chief Breezy. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Todd Cregger. I was a parole agent out here assigned in 2002 when I met Officer Yanis, Sergeant Breezy at the time, and the rest of our team here. Okay, since then, I've moved on to the front office for minor league baseball. Okay? The importance of teamwork in my life, it's an everyday occurrence, okay? From what I've seen and known from the City of Los Banos, I wouldn't have traded my time out here for anything. Okay? But now I want you to be an honorary member of my team. Okay? And I'd like to have my other team members here come up with me. And you just step forward because we have a little presentation for you, too. If that's okay with the City Council.
It's always a good idea when you can look at an attorney and ask if it's...
Right there. So we have a new starting pitcher in Los Banos now. His name is Mayor Yanis.
So we want to present Mayor Yanis with President Breezy Jersey. Do we actually spell his name correctly? Three times in a row. And also, in case anybody gets out of line. Full pitch is produced that we use that 5%. That's a big decision. In honor of his... So we can do a front pad in case he decides to hang it up in the office. If it's big enough for him or for Ashley to work. Oh, season ticket store himself.
I feel so short after all of those big guys left. Hi, guys. I'm Krista Wilson, and I am the Executive Director at Valley Spring Memory Care. We are the newest community here in your beautiful town on the corner of Miller Lane and San Luis. Just wanted to make an introduction today, let you guys know that we are so excited about being a part of your community and are opening up any opportunities that we can provide back or give back. We're only hiring locals, so there won't be any folks that aren't local to the community employed with us. We are looking for lots of different types of skill sets, so we're looking forward to growing in that capacity as here. And boy, this is so nervous, like so nervous. But we, you know, we just, we're super excited to be a part of your town and of your community. And anything that we can do, please let us know. If it's, I have some really great meeting space, so if we need to post a, we've got the Rotary Club coming next month. I don't know if I can say that in here or not. But we would like to just kind of open up our community and help in any way that we can with the resources that we have. Just let us know. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor Yanis. Thank you, councilmembers and staff, of course, City Manager Wellman. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you tonight, partly because of pride and gratitude for the event that took place Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce, whom I'm representing tonight as their president. Our event, our annual Christmas parade, came off without a hitch. Our pride is only exceeded by our gratitude that the rain stopped when the parade began. And it started up again after the awards were given. And who can we thank for that other than perhaps the City Engineer, Public Works Director? So Neeraan, thank you so much. And to anyone else who contributed to that event coming off. We're really grateful to the, all of our sponsors, all of the participants in the parade, and certainly all of the people who came to observe and clap and have a heartwarming time. It's one of our many activities that we do, take great pride in. We also are very grateful, in a specific way, to the city staff who helped arrange the function and has helped us bring it together, both on the street with Public Works and the city police and others. All of those who were helpful to us getting that done. Fortunately, we were one of the few that did not cancel their parade for Saturday night, and we're very, very grateful. We'd like to thank the city for its ongoing assistance with the chamber as we rebuild our business after the years of pandemic and difficult times that we've had and all of our members have had, our member businesses in town. And we're doing everything we can to help them rebuild and help the chamber rebuild as a result of that. And we can't do well unless our members do well. And the city has been very helpful in helping us develop a plan and various different strategies whereby we can restore our ability to carry out that work. And I definitely want to thank Mr. Kim for the guidance we've gotten and the ideas we've gotten to try to develop some additional strategies for rebuilding the economy through our businesses and the people that we're dedicated to. So with that in mind, I want to thank you once, wholeheartedly, thank you all very, very much. Wish the new members of the council, and of course Mayor Yanis, all the very best in your efforts to come together and bring that strength and unity together on the council once again. And we know you have the ability to do it, and we wish you all the very best. Thank you all and Merry Christmas. Oh, I'd like to thank other members of the Chamber of Commerce who are here to kind of give me a little support to, you know, overcome the nervousness of standing here talking to you folks like this. But thank you very, very much. And the chamber, we're holding together. And if any of them would like to add anything at all to the comments, I'd be really happy to have that happen. Thank you. There's a minute, there's a minute left on the microphone. We promise to respect that. Thank you.
I just wanted to say my thanks also as being part of the chamber for many, many years and on their board. We really appreciate any help in working with the city to help save our chamber that helps so many businesses in town. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the public forum? No? Go on once? Okay. At this time, I'll close the public forum. And do you, or I'm sorry, do we leave it open so you can read any comments? Okay. I'm sorry. City Clerk, if you want to read any written and sent-in comments?
I received quite a few. So I'm gonna try and go through the list quickly as I can. I'm trying to summarize them because there are a lot of important pieces. Most of them are not just... So the first email I received is...
An email that got caught up in my spam. And it goes, "Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Salinas, and I live at the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. Again, I reach out to city leaders to take action to relocate the homeless encampment far away from our backyard. Our mobile home park community has endured danger, unsanitary conditions, fear, health problems, and many other significant issues for the last three years. All this while, all other communities in Los Banos enjoy the peace and safety of their homes and neighborhoods. If you don't live in the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park or in the nearby surrounding neighborhoods, you are either clueless of our struggles or you just don't give a damn about us. I urge the city to take action. You are all public servants, so start serving your constituents, especially those of us that you placed in danger when you took it upon yourselves to locate the homeless encampment in our backyard. You're quick about asking for our support when it comes to voting, yet when we've been begging you for months to take action, shame on you. I would be more than happy to help with the planning and the actual relocation, and I challenge all city council members, as well as the rest of the city administrators in their room, to also volunteer to once and for all relocate the homeless encampment. I have many other things to say, but as I am typing, I am being distracted and getting a headache with the noise of the infamous drummer boy. Thank you for your time." And then I have another email. "We conducted a survey at Rancho Los Banos MHP, and the tenants have responded. We gave them the option to email you directly or go through us to email you. I will be sending individual surveys and concerns from these individual tenants. Please read each one of them at our city council meeting on December 7, 2022. Some will be anonymous, but we will have them on file if there is any question of validity with a corresponding number that we have assigned all the surveys. I find these to be very compelling, and I will be including the Chief of Police in these emails, along with our general manager, Casey Miller. I feel this way that Chief Breezy could see that it is just not a few of us, but that our community has great concerns, and it shows in these emails that I will be sending you. I wanted to give you a heads-up with the individual emails addressed from our tenants through our parks email. I have included the first survey. Please read their checked-off concerns and their comments in entirety. Thank you so much. I appreciate you reading them." And that was from Shandra Lewis. So I received a form from Mike Buckley. "I worry that my children will be approached by a homeless person. I worry that a homeless person can offer drugs to my children. I worry that a homeless person can hurt me or my children. I worry that my children or pet will poke themselves with dirty syringes that the homeless throw to our side of the fence. I am disgusted with the terrible smell of urine and feces that come from the homeless encampment. The urine and feces create unsanitary conditions. I am disgusted with the trash at the homeless encampment. The garbage, urine, feces, the track cockroaches, mice, maggots, and other disgusted bugs which travel to our side of the fence and into our homes. Noise is a big issue, loud music throughout the night. There is a lot of racket among the homeless at any random time of day or night. The drummer boy is heard throughout the day and at inappropriate times at night. The constant fires are dangerous, scary, and unhealthy. A fire can easily get out of control. It can spread, and it can set our mobile homes on fire. We end up inhaling the thick black smoke every time there's a fire, and it is not healthy for us, especially for those of us who already have health issues. My home has been vandalized by a homeless person. Homeless people have come into my property to steal. I have seen homeless people trespassing in the mobile home park. I have been stolen from, on four separate occasions, from my home at all hours of the night. Vandalized in multiple instances of people on my property at all hours of the night and day. The noise coming from the homeless encampment never stops. The drums are all night and day occurrence, as well as the music pounding all night. The substances, materials used to make the fires result in smoke that is likely toxic. The fires are constant, especially in wintertime, when making it hard to breathe when you're home, let alone invisible when you're outside. The concerns, this concerns me, especially because I have a young son with asthma who the smoke is very hard on. Everything about these people's placement and their actions has not only been a nuisance since they have been there, but a hazard, health, and safety concern to all who are forced to endure them." And then all of these emails are, it's a form where they've checked off each comment. So, Mr. City Attorney, do you want me to reread every form with the comments that they? It's random. Some check, some, some check a few.
I don't think you need to do that, but you need to like state that you're going to submit those into the record for the minutes.
Okay. And if there's any comments at the bottom, shall I read those?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. So this next email is from Thomas in Anna Denham. And it's the same form with the same concerns. And they've checked off 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of the items that I just read. And this is on file in the City Clerk's office. I have another email from Krista Martinez. And she has checked off 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 of the items that I read prior to. And she has a written comment that's on file with the City Clerk. I have another email from Penny Baker. And she, too, has checked off 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. 16 items that I read previously, and she has a written comment. And it's on file with the City Clerk. I have another one. It's anonymous. And the number references A404. And they, too, have checked off numerous items of concern. I have another email from Jeff Bach. He, too, has checked off numerous emails or items that I previous read into the record. And this is on file with the City Clerk. I have an anonymous tenant, number A406. And they, too, have checked off numerous items that I previous read into the record, on file with the City Clerk. Another anonymous tenant, A407. And they, too, have checked off numerous items of concern that I previously stated, and this is on file with the City Clerk. Another one from Catherine L. Lawrence. She, too, checked off a lot of items, most of them, as I have already stated. And this is on file with the City Clerk. I have another anonymous tenant, A409. They, too, have checked off numerous items of concern, which I have already read previous, and this is on file with the City Clerk. I have another one from LaDonna Perry. They, too, have checked off numerous items of concern that I've already read into the record, and this is on file with the City Clerk. This is an anonymous... This is an anonymous tenant, A411. They too have checked off numerous items of concern that I've already read into the record, and it's on file with the city clerk. I have a few items that are in Spanish, and I'm going to hold those to the side, and Sergeant Mendez is here, and he's going to help me read those into the record. I have one from Manona Rodriguez. They too have checked off numerous items that I've already read into the record, and this is on file with the city clerk. This is another anonymous, A414. Again, they've checked off numerous items of concern, and it's on file with the city clerk. I have one from Anthony Lovato. They too have checked off items of concern that I've already read into the record, and it's on file with the city clerk. I have an anonymous, A416. They've checked off items of concern that I've already read into the record. It's on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A417. Again, they've checked off numerous items of concern. I've already read into the record. It's on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A418. They've checked off items of concern that have already been read into the record, on file with the city clerk. Mary Jimenez has checked off many items of concern that I've already read into the record. It's on file with the city clerk. Rosa Ozo, she too has checked off items of concern that I've already read into the record. It's on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A421, has checked off numerous items of concern that I've already read into the record. It's on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A423, has checked off numerous items of concern that I've already read into the record. It's on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A424. Numerous items of concern are checked off here, already read into the record, on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A425. Items of concern are checked off, which I've already read into the record prior to, on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A426. Numerous items of concerns are checked off, which I've already read into the record, on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A425. Items are checked off of concern, which I've already read into the record, on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A429. Again, many items of concern are checked off, which I've already read into the record, on file with the city clerk. Another anonymous tenant, A430. They've checked off numerous items of concern, which I've already read into the record, on file with the city clerk. Anonymous tenant, A431. They've checked off many items of concern, which I've already read into the record, on file with the city clerk. And I have three that are in Spanish. I don't know if you want to go to the podium and just kind of do what I did. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Se sometieron tres encuestas de residentes de El Caso Mobile Home Park aquí en Los Baños. La primera encuesta es de residente Rodolfo, y chequeó varias problemas que ha tenido sobre las personas sin hogar, y chequeó varios problemas que han afectado su vida de una manera u otra. Y él es residente A427. El segundo residente es anónimo, es residente A422, y igual chequeó varias problemas y cosas que han afectado su vida de una manera u otra sobre las personas sin hogar que viven al otro lado del cerco. Y la tercera encuesta es de, también es anónimo, de residente A412, y lo mismo chequeó varias problemas que ha tenido, que le han afectado su vida de una manera u otra, en referencia a la gente sin un hogar. That's all three. Services that were submitted in Spanish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address our city clerk. Were there some, outside of the items that you read that were listed on there, were there any residents that had additional comments at the bottom that they solicited?
Krista Martinez wrote, "Someone has tried, trying to open my storage on the side of my house." Penny Baker wrote, "Don't understand why the homeless are allowed to build wood structures that can easily catch fire, spreading burning embers into the park. Why are piles of garbage allowed to be accumulated?" Anonymous tenant, A407, wrote, "I have called on the fires many times." Catherine Lawrence wrote, "Last month, my granddaughter and I were home alone. We heard yelling and cussing. This person was in front of our trailer, acting, talking crazy. We keep our doors locked, but we were still very scared. This has always been a safe place for us, elderly and disabled. Now every time I hear noise, noises outside, I'm afraid. September of 2020, I talked to a young officer, told him where I lived. He said they never had calls from our mobile home park compared to the others in town. I told him it was because our manager was strict and followed the rules of the MHP. She kept us safe." Anonymous 410 wrote, "They block, they block us from driving in and out of our mobile home park. When I asked them to move out of road, they used foul language and threw rocks, water bottle at my car. I'm 61 years old and don't feel safe, not fair, I pay rent. I own my home, and my peace has been taken by the unknown we now live in." Actually, that was from Ladonna Perry. Anonymous tenant, A411. "I do not feel safe in my home since the homeless have been near the park. They have been on my property, have vandalized my property. Police report was taken and are stealing from my neighbors. Please remove the encampment so us seniors can again feel safe in our homes, walking in our park." Anonymous, A414. "Two ER visits due to fires." Anthony Lovato wrote, "It is right and moral for due health, and there, and there is to maintain order in the city. Please remove the encampment," and I can't read what he says if needed. Anonymous tenant, A421, wrote, "Not my children, but fear for others. Mobile homes tend to ignite and burn faster than normal homes. Very dangerous for the elderly here." Anonymous tenant, A423, wrote, "Somebody knocked on my door in the middle of the night, and I got really scared." And those are the written comments that were added.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. At this time, we will close the public forum. And then item number 12, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. If I could have the city clerk go through the items.
As follows, warrant numbers 235935 through 236374, in the amount of $716,578.82. Minutes for the October 19th, 2022 city council meeting. Minutes for the November 2nd, 2022 city council meeting. Minutes for the November 16th, 2022 city council meeting. Measure P Oversight Committee Report. City Council Resolution Number 6592. Reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Las Vanas pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6593. Approving acceptance of a UC Davis SPNEUTER grant in the amount of $50,000, and amending the 2022-23 fiscal year budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $50,000. City Council Resolution Number 6594. Authorizing award of contract to AMS Consulting in the amount of $47,560, with a 10% contingency in the amount of $4,756 for the pavement survey and pavement management system implementation and adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year 2022-23 as it pertains to the Streets Fund. City Council Resolution Number 6595. Adopting a revised budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the Fire Department uniforms account in the amount of $6,635. City Council Resolution Number 6596. Adopting a revised budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the Fire Department recruitment account in the amount of $4,650. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Oh, well, I hadn't touched the button. Thank you. I would like to pull item, item H for discussion and a separate vote.
Any, any other council members wishing to discuss any other items or pull any item? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted minus item H for discussion?
I, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus item H.
And do I have a second? Councilmember member?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
And do we do a roll call vote on this? Don't have to. Okay. All right. So we will vote to approve the consent agenda minus item H. All those in favor? Aye. Right. Ayes have it. And discussion on item H?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. There was an attachment in this item that shows we have a budgeted amount of $40,000 on the line item. It appears that the amount of this project is going to cost more, which is 47,560. But there is an increase of $12,316 requested, bringing a total of $52,316, which is well over and above the cost of this project. So I need staff to explain to me why we're asking for roughly $4,000 more than what this item budget is going to cost.
Good evening, Mayor and Member of the Council. That is a good question. So the total contract is $47,000. What we're asking for the 10% contingency is because as part of this payment survey, we are to update our GIS systems as well as our payment management software. Currently, the inventory of our streets are, are limited, so all the new development that has been coming into town need to be taken into considerations. And this survey was going to account it for all those new streets. That's why we're asking for those 10%, contingency, so that all those new street can be then be implemented into the systems. When we put the RFP out, we provided them the entire total segments of what was surveyed before. That was back in 2018. And since then, we have accepted quite a few more developments, and therefore additional center lane mile of road has been added and needed to be included in this contract.
Okay. So what I'm asking is, the 40, okay, then maybe I should make it clear. The $47,560, does that include the additional streets that weren't in the last survey?
No, it does not include the additional street, because we give them the total number of center lane mile that was recorded in 2018, because that was the survey inventory that we have. But we projected that in this 2022, there's going to be additional center lane mile that will need to be done.
Okay. Well, I'm still confused, because that's what you're asking for in the report, is the $47,560. So I would assume that you would have taken into consideration the cost of adding in the new homes. So I'm still wondering why we're asking for, you know, $52,316. Where does that difference fit in? And I'm not a mathematician, so help me out in a simple way here.
Yeah. So in 2018, there was 123 center lane mile that was recorded and was surveyed. Now we are estimating that to be at around 139. So there's an additional 16 mile that was added to there, so roughly 10%. And that's why we are asking to, to have a 10% contingency to account for those additional streets.
So you're asking for the $47,560 plus an additional $4,000 for the contingency fee?
That's correct.
Okay. The contingency fee comes out of the amount that you're asking for. That's normally how staff presents projects to us. So that's why I needed this cleared up. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other members of the council have any questions regarding this item? No. All right. Can I get a motion to approve item H of the consent agenda, which is City Council Resolution Number 6594? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Council Resolution Number 6594 as read by title.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Councilmember Begonia? All right. Have a second by Begonia. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I promise I will figure out this whole microphone thing. All right. All right. Moving on to item 13, council member request regarding the homeless encampment. This is from council member Lewis. And we have information from Police Commander Reyna.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Okay. Let me get situated here. So congratulations to new Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilmember. We look forward to working with all of you. So I'm here to provide you with an update regarding the place road So I'm here to provide you with an update regarding the Place Road encampment and some information, some history. I hope to provide some options, answer some questions, and, and to have a good discussion at the end. So before I get started, we all know that homelessness, homelessness in our community, that's what I know about. But I would say in any community, it's taxing on resources. There are difficult problems to deal with, and it's a local effort. We know that now. It's each individual jurisdiction's responsibility to address homelessness. What we've done in Los Banos, we worked very well with our partners. So I'm going to start off by saying it's boots on the ground, and it's a lot of research, and it's a lot of partnerships. First off, we have great staff. Sergeant Mendez runs our Code Enforcement Division along with his staff. They've done a tremendous job locally to address homelessness, along with our Public Works Department. We have some great partners that we work with, faith-based, Bethel Church. We have some nonprofit groups, people like John Checkley from Merced County. We work very well with these groups. And so, so I would say that in Los Banos, we've done a pretty good job, given our resources. So in terms of what we are here to talk about, we're here to talk about the Place Road homelessness, homeless encampment. The encampment, it's, it's off of Place Road, off of the walking path. And in January of 2022, staff came to council to discuss the idea of consolidating homeless adults in Los Banos into a 200 by 200 enclosure. It was going to allow us to do a few things. So first off, it was going to allow us to, again, consolidate the adults as many as we could in that area. We had identified locations. But it also was going to allow us to force multiply our resources. So instead of having to go out to different areas of Los Banos, we would essentially bring our resources to one location. And that would allow us to reach more individuals. It was also going to allow us to move homeless away from the Northern Fence, our neighbors to the north, and our neighbors to the east. There was also, there, there is also a private property lot to the west. It's a, it's a lot by, owned by someone out of San Jose, and we had homeless there as well. And then the third thing was, we were going to, again, use this camp to provide services, local services, county nonprofit services. And then we were going to draw from this camp to fill Project Room Key as beds became available. And so we went, we went to council in January of 2022. We approved funding to build the camp, and so we opened it in about March. In August, council requested, council requested alternate solutions. And so we, we came back to council in August. And in September, at the council meeting, staff requested direction on, direction and provide information about city-owned properties and parcels that were owned by the City of Los Banos. And then in November, council approved two full-time positions that will address housing and homelessness in Los Banos. So as you can see on the slide, this is a satellite view of the current location of the encampment. We've seen this before. Outlined in red, there is, that's where the 200 by 200-foot enclosure currently sits. This photo was taken online, looks like it's been a few years. And as you could see, at the time the photo was taken, there were homeless individuals that were living throughout the field, but particularly along the Northern Fence. So they had camps set up in those locations. That was one of the things that we were trying to solve. Today, we, our population ranges from about 15 to 20 adults at any given time. So during the day, during the evening, it ranges from about 15 to 20 people. Prior to the enclosure, prior to the enclosure and during COVID, I want to say that our numbers in that field, in that general area, we had about 78 homeless people that were living in that area. So through our efforts, our partnerships, Project Room Key, we have been able to house, relocate, get employed a number of adults that were, that were living in that area and were homeless. So the, as I mentioned before, the encampment requires staff to be present during the week, on weekends. We do events with Public Works, cleanups. It requires a lot of staff, a lot of time. But our goal is to try to keep it, try to keep it clean as, as, as much as we can. Obviously, Public Works staff and Code Enforcement staff have the rest of the city to work on, so we can't be out there cleaning the camp every day, but we are out there at least every week. And I, as I mentioned before, you know, we went from 78, now we're down to about 10 or 15. During the 2022 calendar year, from January 1st to today, we've had approximately 245 calls for service between police and fire to the encampment. And these range from crimes to code enforcement calls, to noise complaints, to officers going out to the encampment to follow up on cases. So not all of them are crimes, but it just, it just represents the amount of time that staff has gone out there and some of the reasons why we've gone out there. So I took this photo. I wanted to, I wanted to take a photo that represents what the camp looks like today. I'm sorry, you know, I wish the screens were a little bigger, but as you can see, this, what I'm, where I'm standing, I'm standing at the northeast corner of the encampment at one of the openings. When we constructed the camp, we constructed it to have at least three 10-foot gaps so that we could bring fire apparatus, patrol vehicles, and ambulances in the event someone had a medical emergency or we had to, we had to respond to a call for service. So I'm standing at the northeast corner of the, of the encampment, and I'm taking a photo towards the southwest. As you can see, we have tents, we have enclosures throughout the encampment, and the center is usually open and free. This is another photo, and this is from the, I'd say, east of the encampment facing west. And so this photo just represents what the camp looks like from about 100 feet away, 100 and 200 feet away. Okay, so while we're here, we all know that this encampment has been, it's been a hot topic. It's been, it's been the subject of a lot of conversation, a lot of comments, opinions. And so we're here today to provide some options. There are four options, the fourth being that you can reject all of these options, and we can look at some other options. But, so I'll go into, I'll start with option number one. So option number one is, is, it's pretty simple. We leave the current encampment open, and we invest in some security improvements. We anticipate that would take a couple of weeks. I put 10 weeks here just because some of the security improvements that, that we could recommend could take time. So we'll go into those security improvements at a later slide, but I just wanted to highlight the four options right now. Number two is we close the current encampment. We select another location from the list of identified parcels. So those parcels were identified by Chief Breezy at a prior council meeting. They're also in another slide. So staff believes that opening another encampment and, and choosing another site could trigger an evaluation through SEQA. And so this is estimated if council so chooses this option, this could take at least six months to move. In the meantime, if we decide to move and we leave the encampment open, we may also consider security improvements in the meantime if we decide to keep the camp open. And then option number three, it's, it's simple. It's we close the current encampment, and we absorb the homeless population back into the community. So I said before, about 15 to 20 adults that are living there. This would involve minimal time, a couple of weeks, minimal cost. This option, it's possible, I would say, that the homeless, they're not there always during the day, so they're out in the public during the day, during the evening. So we don't anticipate that this would be too big of an impact, but it's certainly, it's, it's the easiest option. And then, as I mentioned, option four, we reject options one through three, and council directs staff to do additional research and come up with additional options. I mentioned the security options, the security improvements that we could make. So some of them that we came up with that we think could improve the encampment, number one is supervision. So at night, there's no supervision. During the day, I have staff that come and go throughout the day. I have police officers, code enforcement, there's public work staff that come and go. So there's a number of personnel that come and go through the, through the camp. There's outreach persons and groups. So at any given time, there could be someone on the path that if they saw something, could call it in, we could respond if we're not on scene. At night, we don't have anything. We don't have anyone out there. So option number one, in terms of security, is placing a security guard out there. So I got a few price quotes, took the average, about eight hours. It comes out to a month, a little over $8,000 to have a security guard out there. Thought about, well, what if we just put a staff member out there? Well, you'd probably need two to get seven-day-a-week coverage. So, so the first option would be to add a security guard. The benefit of this, it's very expensive. The benefit of this is, for example, we get a fire call. When we go out there, no one wants to tell us who started the fire, and no one wants to participate in an investigation. But a security guard could tell us, it's that guy right there. And then we arrest him, we take him out of the county. So option number two is a camera system. So this is not just a, like a simple camera system that we would get at Costco. This would be a camera system that would go directly into our network, and it would be monitored by dispatch. It would go into the camera system that is currently monitored in my dispatch center by, in the, in the communication center. It's a one-time cost, it's about $35,000, and that covers the entire thing. So that covers the install, the wiring, it covers the entire thing. The network access, if I did have to put a network card out there, it would be about $50 a month. And then the last option would be lighting. There's no lighting out there, so adding lighting, we estimate about $5,000. And then again, lighting at this, at the current encampment versus another location, if you so choose, it could change the price, it could, it could be less because there may be better access to power. At the current encampment, there's, there's no access to power. You could find it, it would just, it would just be, you know, it would be a cost. So these are some of the security options that, that we came up with. Certainly, there are other things that we can do. If you choose to add this, you can add them all, you could add some of them, you could reject them all. So this is a list of city parcels off of the, off of the rail trail. This was, this, this was presented at a previous council meeting. Let me do this real quick. I, I have it available if you want to look at it, but for now, we'll look at this slide. So I'm going to go over them really fast because I know that Chief Breezy has already covered these. So sites one and two, they're in the area of Second and H Street. So these are all parcels that are generally off of the rail trail near the downtown area, north, north of the downtown area. This, these two sites, they don't belong to us yet, they're in transition, so we anticipate that closing sometime towards the end of the year. They don't belong to us yet, right? And that's something that's happened in the last hour that we don't know about. Yep. Site number three, it's, it's at Second and G Street. There's no, there's no restrictions, but it's bordered by residential and homes and local businesses and, and the rail trail, obviously. Site four, H Street, between Second and Fourth Street. There's a partial land restriction, land use covenant. And so basically, that means that there's arsenic in the ground. The water board would require us to remediate the land, it would be expensive. And so based on the current requirements, you can't put, you can't put anything there that would house, like housing, schools, things like that. Excuse me. And then site five is the Henry Miller Plaza. There's a partial restriction in that area. Site six is at Seventh and G Street. There's no restriction. It's bordered by the community center to the west, the rail trail to the south, and there's a private property lot to the north. Sites seven and eight, they're at Ninth and G Street, there's no restrictions. To the east is the future police department. And then to the north is the Public Works Corp yard, the city yard, and to the south is the rail trail. And then site nine, there's a partial restriction on that, on that parcel to the east side. However, that lot is probably going to be taken for the next year. That's where the staff, the crew that are currently building the police department are staging equipment and placing vehicles. So it's probably going to be occupied for about the next year or so. Okay, so parcels six through eight. Partial six through eight are what we believe will have, will be if the council chooses to move the encampment. Partial six through eight, we believe are probably the best locations to consider placing a new camp if that is the option that the council wants to go with. Okay, so I hope I didn't go through it too fast. So just my closing comments, again, whatever the council decides to go with today, we're going to work with it, and we're going to go with it. Our staff is going to work tremendously hard. We're really thrilled about the two new positions that have become available, and we're willing to take on this challenge. So at this time, if there's any questions or comments, please let me know.
Commander, I know you said roughly 15 or so people out at, at the current encampment. What is our last known total homeless population within the city limits?
I think the last count was 100 and, it's like 120 or so? And that, that includes, that includes people who are in shelters, that includes people who are on the street, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in looking at this, the option two, which of course is the most, wait, is it option one? That's the cameras and all? I think it's option one. Quite expensive. The security guard would cost us almost $100,000 a year, 99,600, camera 35,000, camera network 600, lighting 5,000, which comes to 140,200 for the annual year. The cameras, we don't know how long that's going to last, whether they'll be destroyed, the lighting, the same thing. And, and a lot of property that's over there now, on the west side of the encampment, which is the private property, there's been some destruction, I believe, to the wall, along with the cost that the city has had to incur to repair the fence that belongs to the Mobile Home Park where the seniors live. I, for me, I don't see that as a viable alternative. And, and as, you know, as far as the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal is concerned, they basically indicated that homeless people can live on any public property without restrictions, whether it be SEQA or anything else. So I, I just, you know, for the 140,000 a year, I'd rather see us take that money and save it and invest it in buying a hotel so that we can start helping homeless people off the street again since that money has been taken away. We have money that's been allocated to us to help us start that process. This is even more money that we could put to that process of purchasing a hotel. We're not going to get every homeless person off the street. It's just not reality, and I understand that. But what I don't understand is why But what I don't understand is why we are allowing these senior citizens to feel unsafe, regardless of how many complaints they've made of needles being in their yard, property being stolen, their children feeling unsafe, knocking on their doors at night, fires. I think some of us have seen the newsreel report that was done on the city of Lost Bantals and the fires that were started out there. It was really uncomfortable for me to see our city in that position. So my recommendation would be just to disband it. And quickly work on other options of getting places for homeless people to live. And right now, the most viable option for us is to probably look at purchasing a motel where we can upgrade the facilities inside those motel rooms, rather than purchasing hauling, what are those, metal, big trailers that people use to ship, the shipping trailers, and convert those into living quarters. I just think, you know, it's been a long time for these people who live in the trailer park to have to endure what they've endured, and seeing these newer pictures are just kind of overwhelming to me of what's going on in the homeless encampment. So that would be my position, is the option to just disband that homeless campment, and to use the money to help further the cost of purchasing a hotel property that could be available to Lost Bantals, so that we can continue to help get people off the street. Because when we had, when we had that hotel, it was never, I don't know that it was full all the time, there may have been times when they had capacity of rooms, but there were times when it wasn't. And so, with that in mind, there were opportunities to get people off the street, but you have to realize that there are only a certain population of people who will come off the street, and there are a certain population of people who will never come off the street. So for me, that's the best option, and I don't want it to sound heartless or cruel, because that's not how I'm looking at this. But I am taking into consideration seniors who feel unsafe. I don't think that's the appropriate route that we should take in the city of Lost Bantals, is to make our seniors feel unsafe where they live.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So that's kind of my comment right now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are some things that I agree with Ms. Lewis on. The problem is, I myself deal with this nightly, myself, with my business. My business is on the rail trail. There's nothing that we can do. The fires, I can show you pictures on my phone right now from the fires, from my cameras. It's going to be a problem everywhere we go. If we disband it, they're not going to leave that location, they don't want to leave that location. They would already left that location if they wanted to leave. They're going to move up towards the fence closer to the trailer park, just like the first picture he showed you. Until we get some type of, where we can consistently either monitor them out there with some type of camera, which I can agree, you know, there's ways, when those cameras are mounted, that can be protected against damage, concertina wire, you know, unfortunately. But they have to deal with that on that fence anyway, keep them where they can't get into the camera. The $8,300 a month for a security guard, you know, yes, we need some type of security out there to catch them. The camera system, right now, if, the cheapest way we can go, and the quickest, is the camera system, and it's monitored by the dispatch continuously. Would it catch somebody? We would hope so. But if we disband that location right now, they're not going to, whether we move them out of there or bring them back, they're going to stay right there. Before we put that encampment up, you've seen the pictures of where they were, that's exactly what they're going to do, they're going to go right back to that location. They don't want to come into town, we can bring them into town, but guess what? They like the security out there where they have, in that location out there. They would just migrate right back to the same location. I, myself... The containers, yes, I still think we need to work on the containers slowly. The motel, I'd rather get the containers, myself, you know, I know we voted for the motel, but that was just to get our system started. We don't have to go with motel, we can go with the containers. But until then, I would just prefer to try to put some type of camera system out there. And, you know, the security guard at night, you know, I would like to, I mean, that is quite a bit for the year, I know it's per month. I know, right now, I'm for the camera system, keeping it where it's at, at least that would give us some type of, and the lighting, auxiliary lighting, I know these can be contained to where they cannot be interfered with. It's a simple process that way, and if it is, it's caught on camera, guess what, it's destruction. You know, it's arrest, or even if they try to destruct it. But the night security guard, I think, once we get things rolling with our own force, we'll be able to, you know, with the camera system, our dispatchers would be able to notify something and maybe have some security out there within a short amount of time. But right now, I'm for not shutting it down, but putting some more, going with the solutions of maybe putting the camera system out there, and putting a lighting system so we can monitor more of this. That's where I stand on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this item's actually really frustrating, it's, we get a lot of mixed information out there, and it changes from one week to another. You know, earlier this year, it was actually a well-managed item, it took a lot of work, a lot of resources, but it was somewhat contained. Middle of the year, it started falling apart, we get a couple homeless that start winding up on the trail and more and more, and now we have the majority of the homeless out there on the rail trail, the minority amount inside that designated area that we selected. Putting money to that is like buying a school bus for one or two kids, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm on board with not spending any more money on it at this point, until we can figure out some proper management, but like item two, which was relocating it, well, if we can't manage it where it's at, we can't manage it anywhere. So that's, that's not going to work, and frankly, right now, the homeless have already been reabsorbed back into the community. So you can really do nothing, save good amount of money until we can figure out a better plan, because us trying to address this every week like we have, is just not getting anywhere other than just wasting a lot of time. So I just don't see any point to keep going on with this, I think we need a better program. I don't know if a hotel on Pacheco is the right answer, it's just tying up a property for 55 years is just really not a smart idea, unless it was going to be the best-looking property on Pacheco. So I think we may need to look at other options than that, possible shelter, I know Mayor Paul Yanis, he had a great idea that I'd like to explore, and I'm sure he's going to have a few words on it. Thank you.
All right, so I want to be very clear about my position on this. The number of homeless that we are dealing with, and I've watched numerous meetings and been all over the state, rather than move the problem, or rather than invest in ways to look at the problem, we need to face the problem. And the problem is, these are human beings, right? And it's not that we want to put a roof over their head and that's going to solve everything, the issue is their people, and we need to motivate and inspire them to be members of our community and productive members of our community. And so I don't think that a hotel, or a fence, or a camera is going to do that. I think a shelter is going to do that, and a shelter that's run correctly with programs. And I know there's been this fear over the Boise case, and, you know, our hands are tied. The reality is, our hands aren't tied, we just have to face the problem for what it's for. We have to build a shelter, it has to have the number of beds that exceed our homeless population, and then we can change the municipal code to create real consequences for the people that choose to stay on the street and choose to commit crimes. And that's my position on this. Looking at here, the starting point tonight, you know, the reinvestment of time and, you know, things like that, option three is the only viable option, makes sense to me. We have people that have been pouring their hearts out to council meetings, you know, please help us deal with this issue, it's literally in our backyard, and it has our name on it with the city. And so, looking at it is that, and I understand Councilmember Slammer's point, I mean, we can't make them move, but the reality is, we can't make them move anywhere in the city. You know, they're up and down the rail trail and other parts, so this is a very small population, so my position is, is option number three, that we close the current encampment as soon as possible and absorb them back in the community, and then work with staff on a real developed plan to move forward with a shelter. Still getting the bugs out with this thing, I'm trying. All right. Any, any further, and thank you, Commander Raina, I'm sorry.
And so briefly, what would it require to close the current encampment? Are we just saying that we're just not going to be actively maintaining it financially? Or are we taking it all ground, down and disking it up, and then what are we doing with the homeless that are pretty fixated in there?
So the closure of the encampment would involve noticing those living there, providing notice that the camp is going to close, then it would, that would take a few weeks, and then it would involve removing the fence, and remediating the property, disking, cleaning, removing all the trash from the property, and then disking the land.
So my question is, why can't we do that right now with the ones that are on the rail trail? If we can do it in one spot, that's a city property, because with my understanding is that if I wanted to camp out on Highway 152, I'd probably get in trouble, probably can't do that, because it impedes traffic or something else, safety issue. Same thing if I wanted to camp out on the sidewalk of downtown, I probably can't do that, because it impedes foot traffic, maybe ADA issues. So where can we get creative to, one, either just say, hey, they're going to move wherever they move, and that's it, but tearing that down, spending the money to tear it down for right now and say, hey, they're no longer going to be there? How are we going to keep them from being there? We're going to build a fence up to keep them out of that lot? It's just, I just don't, I think we're throwing good money at bad.
So to answer your question, on the rest of the trail, we do our best to move them along, they're all over the trail. So for example, today, there's no one between Place and Mercy Springs in Pacheco, but between Mercy Springs and Pacheco and Seventh, there's probably about eight tents, those tents move all over the place. And so, public work staff, on a weekly basis, we go out there, we pick up garbage, we clean up the area, they'll just move to different places. Then we have some off of further west of the railroad, we have them, I think we just saw one that was sleeping in an alleyway near the police department the other day, they just move all over the place. But, you know, to answer your question about the encampment, yes, they probably, some of them may come back, some of them may leave, they're just, so that's definitely an option, that's definitely a concern as well.
So if they wanted to leave from that area, they would, so we're saying that we don't have any encampments from Mercy Springs to Place on the trail, right?
Today, as of this morning, when I went down there, there was no one.
And that's just because, one, we're monitoring them and pushing them away from that, or steering them away, or is it because they just, no one set up camp?
Generally, we try to push them towards the encampment. There was one individual that was left, and he ended up getting arrested a few days ago, and so, and then Public Works goes in and removes trash and clean up the property, and so as of this morning, when I went down that trail, there was no one on the, between Place and Mercy Springs, particularly.
So between Mercy Springs and Seventh, and between Second and, say, the industrial park, they start loading up in those areas there?
Correct.
Are we not moving them from there, encouraging them to go back to the current designated homeless area, because there's just so many of them in there right now, and it just takes a lot of...
Some of them, well, we encourage them, but not all of them get along with each other. Some of them don't want to be in the encampment because of people who live there, they may have had prior conflicts with them, some of them may want to be closer to the downtown, maybe they are worried about being attacked at night or victims of crime, and so, not all of them want to stay in one location together.
Okay, so, from what it sounds like, a lot of the unsheltered people, they don't always play well with each other, they don't always like to be next to each other, and they definitely like to spread out and get away from each other. So no matter what we do, even if you want to chop down that current fence, they may be right back there, so I don't even know if it's worth spending the resources to level that, just leave it as it is, at least it might provide some barricade against some of this weather that's coming through, if some want to stay in there. But you guys will actually want to clear them out from there completely, and then how do you plan on managing keeping them out? We can't keep them out of the places that they shouldn't be in in the first place, so if you guys can answer that.
So, so the issue is, without a shelter and without something to adjust the municipal code, our hands are tied, period. So unless we face the problem, actually face it, rather than try to adjust it and move it, you know, right now, there's no consequences. And so, we need to come up with a structured plan to say, here's what we're going to build, and now we can then create the consequences, and that's what the federal statute has taught us. But we're not in that, we're definitely not in that point yet.
I just don't want to tie up Public Works and Code Enforcement and trying to post notices, removing them from the area, and then trying to level that area, I think it's just, like I said, throwing good money at bad.
Mayor, I remember about a year and a half ago, I watched public television, and down in Santa Barbara, you know, they managed to get some money along with grants and whatever other monies they have, and they did build a homeless shelter for people that were living on the street, but there were some strict requirements to stay in there. You know, you couldn't be using drugs, you had to go to counseling, you had to go see your mental health worker, you had to stay on your medications. There were guidelines in order to help the residents who stayed there be able to stay, and if you didn't abide by those guidelines, then you couldn't stay anymore. And then there was a next step that was, that they built, it looked like a beautiful motel that any of us would want to stay in, with a center fountain, the whole nine yards, for the next level of people who were able to get past that first stage, who were able to get jobs, and it gave them another place to stay. So, you know, we want to throw good money away, and that's how I see it, you know, and I'm agreeing with the mayor, we've got to come up with something better, instead of just trying to fix stuff with a Band-Aid, and it doesn't go anywhere, because you can't change people's minds. You can help them, but right now, under state law in California, there's not a lot of mental health treatment anymore. It just isn't. And I've said this 1,000 times, sitting up here, not literally, but a lot of times, I worked in that system for almost 20 years, where people were conserved because they were a danger to themselves and others, living on the street, harming themselves or harming someone else. And they could be taken off the streets, put on a 72-hour hold, take it even further than that, certified, and end up on a conservatorship, and in the hospital, being treated, given medication, and reconstituting their lives, so you can begin to introduce them back into society. But our state does not do that anymore. So now, it's on our shoulders to find an alternative. Yes, we talked about the containers, we talked about several things, and our staff said that the possibility of purchasing a hotel would be the most viable way that we can begin to get people off the streets. So, you know, I'm in favor of helping people, I was a conservator myself. I made sure that my clients were housed and living somewhere and taking their medication and seeing their doctors. But that doesn't happen anymore, it's the new reality that we live in. So now, what can we do as a city? Try to get money together as quickly as possible, and get shelter prepared for these people, whatever that shelter is. All I know is that the staff said that the hotel would be the least costly way that we can get to what we need to get to quickly. But I just can't see spending this kind of money, even one time, where we could take that $140,000 and put it towards possibly getting this, a motel much quicker. Yes, they can sleep on a sidewalk, they can sleep behind the police station, they can sleep here in front of City Hall, they can sleep on any public property. And they could probably sleep on the street too, if they wanted to. But now, we need to look at moving past where we are now, to look forward to the future, to find a way to house people who are living homeless, because that's the mandate, the Because that's the mandate the state of California has put on the back of every single city and community. And we've got to deal with it. So I say let's begin to gather, uh, let's maybe have some workshops pretty quickly and figure out a way how we can move forward and get money. I'm hoping this personnel that we're going to be hiring for housing and homelessness will be somebody that's qualified, that can help us get grants because we're kind of in a lost chasm here in, in Los Manos at what 44, 45,000 people. It, it's kind of like we don't really matter. So we've got to figure out a way to conquer this problem that we have in front of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, council member, yes. What you're mentioning in terms of finding local solutions, Mr. Mayor, council members, these are all things that we a hundred percent agree with you. Staff, Mr. Kuhn, other department heads, Ms. Elms, uh, we have these discussions all the time. We're working towards these things. I know that we have applied for grant funding. Just today, we had a meeting with, um, someone who brings a solution. It's Mr., uh, where is he? Yes? Sir Checkley was there, um, from the Merced County. So these are just things that are going on in the background that we're, we're trying to work, uh, together and to bring forward. They just take time and they take money. They, it's, it's competitive. And I wish that we could snap our fingers and the state of California would drive up in a nice shiny car and hand us the check and, and we could get on the road tomorrow. But unfortunately, it's, it's very difficult to get some of this funding. It's competitive. Chief Breezy, I know he is nodding his head because he understands Ms. Elms, Sir Kuhn, it's, it's competitive, but we are working towards it so that we can comply with Martin V. Boise.
Yeah. You know, I, the idea that Paul does have shelter, uh, you know, we've said in the past, we need some type of shelter. How long's that process? It's going to be a while. Yes, workshops need to be set up, uh, you know, location. But what are we going to do in the meanwhile? We still have to come up with something. I mean, we're going to be, the grant writing, it, it's not just a one-time cost, but we're going to have to, it's been put on the cities now to monitor, do this. We're going to have to grant write every year, you know, just to get monies to take care of this every year, whether they're in a shelter or whatever we're doing. Who's going to monitor the shelter once we get the shelter bill? We're still going to have to manage it too. But we're going to have, the solutions, we need to do something now, uh, but yet get things started like, uh, for like what Paul was suggesting, shelter, the motel. I, I'm kind of, the motel's a 55-year process if we went with a motel. From what I hear, Merced is about to open up, uh, those containers over there, I believe, in February, January or February. Um, you know, I'm interested, interested in seeing how that works. But we got to, I mean, we, we're not going to make nobody happy because we're going to fight this every month, every day with the homeless. Uh, but if we can put forth, go ahead and show, uh, you know, uh, staff that, hey, we are getting workshops together, looking towards shelter, uh, whether it's a shelter, the Conexes. I know right now we still have the, the, I'm not sure what that application that we filled out, the H.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's in process, but we still have to worry about it now.
So, so as, as Ray mentioned, I'm sorry for, for interrupting, but this might be helpful. We're going through the whole process of developing timelines for every single project. So we're talking best case scenario to worst case scenario. And we have been working really hard on identifying the actual costs for each one of these so that, because we have to do that in order to apply for these things. You can't just go, hey, we want this. They want to know if you have a plan, that how quickly you're going to be able to put this in design. So the, the runways on these projects are, from best cases about 12 months to worst cases is closer to, to two, to two years. So, um, we're, what we're going to try to do and prepare this for the next meeting is, is I present everything that we've kind of identified based upon all the different strategies that we've been talking about over the last few months. And having a clearer picture so that you guys can see, okay, this is going to be a lengthy process. In some cases, something that looks good. Actually, when we get the valuation, it doesn't look as good. So we're going to explain all of this and, and really show how the funding works. Because the grant writing, yes, that's, that's integral, but you, we have to identify what we're going to do in order to actually apply for the grant. Cause as Ray said, they're competitive. So you have to have really a plan in place and it can't be like, well, we'd like to do this, this. So probably either the next council meeting or the meeting after that will have a very distinctive scenario of the different things like the shelter, the tiny homes, the hotel, you know, moving these to, to wherever so that you, you guys will have a clearer picture going forward. And then we're going to also identify the grants that we, that we're going to compete for, and we'll get direction on where you guys want to go.
A question too, we're going to be working with all this. With the state of California, the way they are, did they put it upon us to where maybe we need to take care of mental health issues with the county, work with this county, city? Maybe we need to pull some of that also to have, uh, more of that available.
Well, so, so when you're talking about that, you're, you're talking, so there's, there's these sunk costs and then you're going to have these, these recurring costs. So we have to be careful that we don't extend ourselves in, in the CIP process and developing these things and then go, uh, we didn't realize that the cost, ongoing cost to, to really work these programs and staff these places was not realistic. So in this whole presentation, we don't just say, here's the CIP. We go, here's the cost of land or CIP or renovation. This is what it's going to cost for the city to, to manage or have a third-party property manager or all of these things. So there's a lot of, of projects that have already been done. So we have a lot of, of benchmarking that we can do. So I think it'll become clear, like within the next month, exactly which direction we should take. It is going to be a process and it is going to take a time. It's, it's, we can't just say, here, this is what we're doing. It, it's, it's going to take a concerted effort. And in, you know, the, the year to eighteen, eighteen months is, is really like grinding hard and, and, and really, really driving, driving the point because of, of all the requirements that are in front of us with building any structures or doing any of this stuff.
And I totally agree on that. But yet we're still going to have to come up with something right now that's going to, yeah, help take a little pressure.
That, right. That's correct. But I think that's what Ray is presenting to you tonight. I'm trying to take off from Ray the responsibility of, of that long-term discussion until we can present that in, in the next council meeting. That, that's why I brought that up. Does that make sense?
Oh, I, I totally under, I knew that was already coming.
Okay.
Um, but right now we're trying to figure out what we can do. Uh, and you know, it might even be short-term. I, I'm, you know, not sure. I, I still feel, you know, uh, you know, if shutting down the encampment out there, I myself feel that it's going to cause more problems than what it actually is. Right now, they know that, you know, they're keeping themselves somewhat control, uh, contained inside that encampment. But if we shut it down, uh, which I feel, you know, I drive out there still, you know, I, I have them, you know, they were talking about having them in our front yard. Unfortunately, on my street, I've got them living in cars in my front yard. So there's nothing you can do.
So I guess, I guess the options are in front of you. And if, if you don't like any of those options, just give us direction to find another option. I think that's kind of where we are.
And that's right. I thought, and, cause I thought the last meeting, we gave you that, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, that also.
Okay.
So I, I'm done. I think everybody knows the rest.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members, members of the council. I know, uh, in, in the past, we have continually had this as a subject of discussion and, and frankly, um, those of us who have been in the mental health, uh, helping professions, uh, public health, et cetera. It is a matter of being relentless. The homeless population is never going to go away. So it's a matter of really meeting human needs. And so what are they? I think we've identified, we've done, frankly, at the state level, a couple of major studies over the past 25 years that have identified three basic conditions of the homeless population. And they all have to be addressed. One is substance addiction. Okay? And you've, you've heard all about that. Two is mental illness. Okay? Three is developmental disability. That, those things that we all suffer from, 15% of our population, we are born with some level of developmental disability. And if you take those three conditions, they frequently occur in the homeless population within the single individual. So, um, it's, it's, it's really a matter of determining what the strategy is. Now, I've, I've personally taken a, a ride around Merced City, Atwater City. I know a little bit about both. Livingston, Turlock and, and parts of Modesto. You never want to get overconfident, but I think the numbers that I see are, are declining as a result of actions that your council and your staff has brought to bear here. I would say this, you've heard about two new positions that are being, that the, the council has approved that, uh, are in process of being developed. And I understand that I'm going to have those in my desk within a matter of days. The council needs to, um, approve the job descriptions and we need to get out for recruitment. How, how, um, I've already had calls on these actually. And how, how long do you keep that recruitment open? I'm saying a minimum of two weeks. Maybe you expand that to up to four weeks. I don't know what's, what's best. I'll be looking to staff to make recommendations there. So, uh, if, if, if we all agree that we move forward smartly, we should have something for you, depending upon what you do, uh, the first, certainly the first meeting in January, which I think is the fourth, is it not, Ray? Yeah. So we, we're going to be working closely with finance, make sure that the, the, the numbers are buttoned down and that people understand what we're doing and why. And we'll be back to you. Thank you.
So basically are we asking staff to continue exactly what they're already doing, which is just letting it be until we can find a better solution? We got one, a long-term solution, which could be a shelter. Two, more of a temporary solution that can actually provide some sort of beds, but that's a double-edged sword and we'll cross that when we get to it.
So, so, so my thought again is, you know, we're, we're not going to eat this entire elephant tonight. I mean, this is a long-term problem, right? And so we're going to do that one bite at a time. I think it's important for the community to understand though, that, you know, our jobs up here is to look at the positives, what we have. We are very fortunate. I have worked in the city of Oakland and I've dealt with the homeless in the city of Oakland. And I will trade Los Manos for Oakland every day of the week and twice, twice on Sunday. So I'm, I'm encouraged at the opportunities we have. Um, and, and so I want the community to understand that we have to take this one step at a time. I'm, I'm not at all afraid to hear things like 18 months or two years because if we do it right, that's something someone else doesn't have to deal with after that, right? Or they have a more manageable way of doing that. So I'm not, I'm not scared of the timelines as long as it's done properly and correctly. So, um, I, I would like to see tonight that, that we make a selection up here, rather be option one, two, three, or four, um, to give staff direction and then move forward from there. So I don't know if I need to make a motion for that or... Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, to move forward with option three on, uh, the agenda for the, um, the homeless trail encampment.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I will second it then.
If you have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So to be clear, does that motion include tearing down the fence that's there? Or does it mean keeping it there, but you can still do an eviction if you want, even though they'll be right back in two months, the ones that want to?
So option, option three, I'm sorry.
An option three.
Yes, council member. So option three essentially would involve completely closing the camp, removing the, the enclosure, the fence and, um, or mediating the land, disking it, cleaning it. That's what it, uh, option theory would involve. And minimal cost, two to four weeks.
And that, that fence is city fence, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. 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 So I, I remain with my, my second for councilmember Lewis's option, option three. Do we take a vote?
Unless there's any further discussion.
I mean, we, we take a vote on that? All those in favor of option three, close the current encampment and absorb the current population back into the community, uh, two to four weeks, minimal cost is the estimation. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
I'm going to be an aye on it because I want to show what's going to happen when we tear it down, on how it's, unless we have management on it, we're still going to have an issue there. But at least this way we can cross one checkbox off that we tried something and we can see what happens and then we can readdress this problem in a few months. The fence is already torn up, destroyed anyways.
All opposed?
I'm going to be an aye as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I do agree with, uh, you know, I live right by the encampment. It's in my district and, I mean, I see more homeless outside of the encampment than in it. I've been out there myself. I see 10 tents and I, I mean, we are going to level it and they will be back. And I just hope they're not closer along the fence, just like they were in the picture, previous picture. But that's where we're going to start. Hopefully it works out. I, I do see them coming right back though.
All right. So the direction for staff is option three and we will, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, we've already done the, the public forum, I'm sorry. All right. Moving on to item 14, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, proposed changes to spending plan as it relates to the Rad Card Program, Small Business and Non-Profit Assistance Program.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this moment, uh, on item 14, the American Rescue Plan, I am going to recuse myself from this item, uh, due to the fact this possibly could, uh, have my business eligible for it.
Okay. All right. So for this item, we're going to interim finance director Kuhn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. What I'm bringing to you is, is really just first a, a quick and dirty update on where we are with the spending plan for ARPA. And then to move into, um, really just reprogramming funds, uh, that we, that the council programmed for, for community involvement. And, um, just the, the pro, the program, we went through and looked at all of the different programs that we currently have approved and to see whether it's moving forward properly or, or if it, it doesn't make any sense. So what we found, and this is a description of, of the approved programs. There's the Rad Card Program that was a million. There's investment, technology and equipment, upgrades to city-owned property. There's a homeless assistance program in this. There's investment in parks, specifically the Colorado Ballpark. We have... We have tree trimming in this. There's a pickleball court that's approved for $600,000. An animal shelter improvement for a million. There is some legal in there, and then we, of course, had the premium pay for city employees. The current balance of the ARPA funds are approximately $7.3 million, of which approximately 3.75% has not been specifically programmed. So the Rad Card Program, it started out well, from what I heard. I wasn't here at the time, but since then, it's kind of languished into a, where we're not even sure that anybody's even using it anymore. So what we thought was going to be a fairly significant impact on the community, it didn't turn out as intended. So we are requesting that the council direct the staff to terminate the agreement with a 30-day written notice to the vendor. They are holding approximately $250,000 still from the 500 that we sent over there. Now, that may not, that's an approximate figure, because we're still trying to get communication from them as to what they still have for us. And it's a 30-day notice, so a lot can happen. Some people could use this within the 30 days. So we're anticipating it's about 250, that's going to come back with. They have some administrative costs that they attach to this. So we're not positive that they're going to take the entire 57,000 that was in the agreement. It might be half. We're not sure. We still haven't been able to get good answers from them. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to exchange the refunded amount plus the 550 that's programmed for this and reprogram it into a kind of a direct funding assistance for small businesses and nonprofits, and that's through a grant loan program. And this will assist the community based upon funding availability. So there are criteria within this, and there's both impacted and disproportionately impacted. I'll go through the impacted first, and there's qualifying factors, decreased revenues, increased costs, and financial insecurity. This is a summary of what the Treasury has put out, and I can give you guys more information if needed. I think a lot of it was written in the staff report. The funding uses are for payroll, mortgage rents, utilities, and operating costs. Now, on the disproportionately impact, there is an actual, so really, the only one that we'd qualify are those operating in a qualified census tract, because we're not operating in the U.S. territory, and we're not operating tribal governments. So, sorry. This is the area, the shaded area, that's in the qualified census tract. So these people would qualify just based upon that they're at need people. So there's a tiering system for the impacted people that have to go through the qualifying process. And these are businesses, so there's a first tier, where businesses were completely closed by public health mandates for at least six months. Second tier, businesses that were not forced to close, but suffered revenue losses greater than 50% in 2020 or 2021 compared to 2019. The third tier is businesses that incurred substantial expenses due to pandemic-related to safety measures and to stay operational. They had to increase their costs to improve safety measures to stay open. So this is really a quick synopsis of the plan. The plan that we have is that there'll be an application process. We are going to go through and advertise this through our website and potentially social media. There will be a scoring process for anybody that applies, and that scoring process will be reviewed by the Community and Economic Development Director, myself, and potentially the city manager. And what we are proposing is that the amounts are up to $50,000. So we're going to be able to look at the need and base the amount that we will loan predicated on what they can show was their pandemic impact to their businesses. It's a first-come, first-served process, so we will, as we take applications in, we will give precedent or priority to those. And we would probably anticipate that the loan program would play out where there's a four-month requirement to maintain certain levels that are required per the Treasury. And then after that, it would transition to a grant. So the whole process here is that it's not just a, you know, take the money and run type of thing. So really, what we're looking for is the council to adopt a resolution and fund the small business grant program, in essence is what it is, by relocating the remaining Rad Card funding to assist this program. Again, this is not taking from any other programs. It is strictly just realizing that the Rad Card Program wasn't working and applying it to another program that will impact the community, which we think will impact the community better than this. So I guess, is there any questions or comments or?
Brent, Ken, you've mentioned a cap-out amount of $50,000. Can you go through the thought process that you went through in recommending that cap amount?
So what this is, is for businesses that have less than $500,000 in gross receipts. So we thought a 10% cap on that. And so we would probably have a similar 10% cap for, once we see what the gross receipts were and look and see what the impact is. So we would present that through the scoring process and say, okay, if they're applying for 50,000, the approval might be only 30 based upon the impact. Because the whole point here is to spread this money to the community, not just one or two individuals. It's because the pandemic impacted the entire community. So we wanted to give kind of as much support as we could, and we just thought that this program made the most sense.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you indicated that it would be a grant loan program, does it start off as a loan and then turn into a grant?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So it'll be.
So that's for everybody across the board?
Yes, yes. So it's to ensure that the money goes to help operations and to help keep the business going, and it's not to supplant things. It's to kind of make up for these things. And so what the criteria states is that there has to be, it has to be an existing business within the city limits. It has to be in good standing with business license and, you know, all of these things. So there's criteria that we'll go through in order to make sure that that happens. But the four-month is a suggestion before it becomes a grant, just to protect the funds not being used for other purposes. Because over those four months, there'll be a compliance requirement. So they'll have to actually send documents to the city to review. And if they don't comply with that within the four months, it continues as a loan.
Okay, and that was going to be my next question in regards to that. So has staff already, in regards to the scoring process, has staff already outlined what the criteria is now? Do you guys have that already set in place?
Yes, we've been talking back and forth over the last couple of months, because when I came here, it seemed like this program had stalled. And so my concern was that, one, the community wasn't getting, you know, the intended dollars. And because really, what took place, and this was prior to me coming here, is that a lot of this money was programmed to revenue replacement. So it really was kind of a catch-all to any programs that you guys wanted to do. And that was what was reported to Treasury. So I didn't want to take from future programming to, you know, other types of programs that will help the community. This was already in place. I know I'm going farther than the question that you asked, but I'm giving a little bit of background. So that's why we did this program. So we've been talking back and forth. We've identified how the application process will look, how the scoring process will look. And I can go through that with you. It's pretty involved. And then how the compliance will look and how the documents, the, once they are approved. The documents are pretty concise and restrictive over those four months. So we're going to have a little bit of added cost to review the compliance, but mostly, it will be having them report back on a monthly basis. And those are the covenants that will be put into the loan.
And the reason I ask, if you had all this information in place and ready to go, if we approve this tonight, I assume you're ready to move to help businesses, so?
I am. Probably will start at the beginning of the calendar year, because I.
So, yeah, I would have liked to have seen what your criteria was, you know, to be in the packet. I would have preferred that that information had been there so the council could at least see how staff is operating to make this program work.
Okay.
So individually, you know, I know that I can come in, but it would have been a lot easier to just kind of give us that information upfront.
Sure, I apologize for that. I tried to pare this down a little bit, because I really wanted to focus more on what the program was, not the criteria for what would constitute a loan approval. So it was maybe an oversight on my part. I apologize for that.
And for the newer staff, a lot of times, you're going to have businesspeople in the community ask you, well, why can't I do this, this, or this? And at least you would have had the opportunity to review and say, the staff is doing this, and these are the reasons why. The nonprofit category, and help me on this, because as I see it, nonprofits generally don't pay taxes, you know, that kind of thing. Or maybe some of them do. But I guess I just kind of want to figure out how they fit into this Rad program.
So this is really not to generate a tax basis for the city?
No, I'm not talking about generating a tax. I'm talking about what businesspeople have to do in order to run their business. They pay federal, you know, they may pay taxes and all that stuff.
Of course.
And nonprofits are generally exempted from some of those things.
Of course, but they're also one of the leading community organizations that are for public benefit. So the reason why we included nonprofits is that we felt that there may be, that these nonprofits had to close down during that time period, and it limited their ability to have the outreach that they needed. And to me, that was kind of what COVID did. It didn't allow this kind of outreach to these people. So that's why I included this in here, and that was my decision. So I'm not following your question so much as like, because they don't pay taxes, they shouldn't get a loan?
Well, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't really know, because I thought these loans under the federal contract was supposed to help businesses, not nonprofit organizations.
The Treasury does allow for nonprofits as well.
Okay.
It's in the code.
Okay, all right. That makes it clear, then.
Yeah.
Did you still have any more questions?
I think, I think that pretty much cleared, let's see, let me look at this. Okay, in, we have a lot of businesses, especially in our downtown area, that are just renting from an owner. So in here, it talks about rehab of commercial property, things like that. So those things you won't be looking at for a businessperson who may be leasing a space.
Well, yeah. If they don't have the ability to make those leasehold improvements, like if they came to us and had an outline that they are allowed to make these leasehold improvements, and it's a benefit to them, and it's going to attract people and whatever, then that might be a criteria. And there'll be landowners that people may have vacated there, and that may have impacted their, you know, their gross revenues. So they need to attract more people to come down there. So there's, that's one of the reasons why I didn't put all these in there, because there's a considerable amount of language that goes into the scoring and into the actual loan contracts. So this was just more trying to push away from the Rad Card, which we can stay in if you guys want to, to a more, I think, beneficial program. So I'm very happy to actually go through the program, maybe on a different.
I don't think that's what I'm asking you right now. I'm just trying to clarify some things that I have questions on. And certainly, the details of things, I can come to your office and have you lay that out for me. I don't, I'm not asking you not to do away with the Rad Card. That's my purpose, just to try to clarify. Because I know that some of our businesspeople are required by the building owners to do all their upgrades themselves, so I just want to know if that's.
And that's in there. And there was also, you know, outdoor seating that they may need to now bring back up to a different code standard or whatever, or there may be things that they need to, you know, do to eliminate some of that stuff. So it's all predicated on COVID impact, right? It's not to increase economic, you know, development within the city. That's a totally different program that we're working on for the future.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just simply to spread these relief dollars to these individuals that were harmed by the pandemic.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I like what you guys kind of outlined. I personally don't need to know the detail of how you guys are going to be scoring it. I'm sure you guys have firm grasp on it. But I would like to see, I think 50,000 is a little high to start as far as a maximum cap. I would like to see that at 25,000. That way, it opens up for more potential applicants or more businesses, so we can help them out. But for in, for in case it's not all used up, I'd like to, if there's leftover funds, do a second funding cycle and have current applicants or ones that have already applied that have received funds be eligible to receive additional funds.
Is there a timeline that you would like?
No. I'll leave it up until you guys figure it out.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my only question is, and I'm 100% on board, that Rad Card had a shot. It had its chance, and it just didn't, you know, do the community benefit. My only question again is what, I guess, what sort of KPIs or what, you know, what indicators are you going to use to judge the success of this before maybe going back to the drawing board, or is this it?
You know, I was going to give this a calendar year and, you know, say that within the advertising that this program is available till X. I can maybe shorten that and say, give it a six-month or seven-month cycle, and then we can come back and say, it was a success or not, or it could be three months. Whatever, that's why I asked, whatever timeline you guys want.
And I only say that only because, you know, as business owners, if you got a grant or a large sum of money, there'd be some strategic planning how you're spending it. Versus a Rad Card, you hope somebody comes in the door.
Right, right.
And so I think you'd be more, you know, strategic, and you'd spend it earlier.
Yes.
So that'd be my thing. Mr. Wolfman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, and Brent, without taking us back to when the earth cooled, what I hear is that folks really want to know what the criteria, if I'm an applicant, how am I?
So that'll be.
Let me finish.
Okay.
How am I going to be judged? What are the criteria that are going to be used? So if you've got that, why don't you give me an email?
Right, but again, so it, that's not really the way the program works. The program works is that.
You don't have criteria?
Yeah, but the criteria isn't how we score things. The criteria is that if you're under 500, it's a general criteria. The criteria is that if you're under 500, it's it's a general criteria. They'll say, oh, yeah, this will work for me. I'm going to submit an application. That we're not going through and and telling everybody that that we're going. That would be kind of.
Well, let me go back, okay?
Because I I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I want to apply for 25,000, 30,000. I know it's going to be a competitive process. But what are the mileposts or the criteria against which I'm going to be judged alongside other applicants for the money?
So it it's in here, there are businesses that that closed at least six months, businesses that that were not closed that suffered a loss greater than 50% within within those years that were stated as compared to before the pandemic. The third tier is is that they had substantial expenses due to pandemic-related safety measures, so PPA, other things like that. And then, to be eligible, you have to experience, you have experienced business interruptions, closures or curtail that had basically negative impact of COVID. The 500,000, be a current Los Banos business or or nonprofit located within the city limits and have a current business license or or, you know, equivalent, and not be delinquent in the payment of any taxes or fee owed to the city. So and then you have to have a physical location within the city limits, and you must be current on all state, local licensing and other regulatory requirements. So that's 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 what we're going to publish, okay? How we determine what they're going to get or not. Make sense?
All right, anyone have any final comments, questions? All right, do I have a? Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay, so for item 14, the American Rescue Plan Act, do I have a a motion? I'm sorry, this is, yeah, City Council Resolution Number 6597, authorizing a change to ARPA spending. Do I have a a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Oh, let's do it.
All right, I like to make a, oh, okay. I do have a change in it that I'd like to do. So I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6597 with a change from a $50,000 cap to a $25,000 cap.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
Second from Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. She's gonna go get. All right, so we're gonna we're gonna move forward with item 15, which is the adoption of a resolution approving the Low Impact Development Standard Plan. This is from Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Good, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, Councilmember. Again, this item will tag teams with, I'll introduce you to to Gretchen here in a little bit. But I apologize, we didn't come up with these names, but the state did, so it might be a little bit long. But essentially, what this item will present to you tonight is a new standard plan to address some of the wastewater, waste discharge in regards to stormwater. So this is in compliance with the State Water Resource Control Board. Again, for the waste discharge requirement for stormwater discharges from small municipal separate stormwater sewer system MS4. Again, I I didn't come up with the name. It's pretty long. But I'd like to introduce you to Gretchen Heinstor. She is with the Provost and Preacher. She is the project manager specifically for this standard plan. She's been a great assistance in helping us throughout the year in putting this plan together as well as make sure that we are in compliance. So without further ado, Gretchen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Thanh. Mayor, council members, nice to meet you. Just like Mr. Thanh said, this is a prescriptive requirement put on by the State Water Board that came about in 2013. This requirement was supposed to be adopted and implemented in 2015. Never happened. We don't know the reasoning why. The plan was provided, but as you know, there has been staff turnover quite a bit. And that's what we're just going to attribute it to. So as you can see, this started in 2013. The general permit, as I'm going to refer to it here on instead of the 15-worded title, is the general permit. The LID Standards Plan purpose is to promote stormwater runoff reduction, which in turn promotes or encourages reduced flooding risks throughout the city and the surrounding areas in where you you discharge into. It promotes pollutant reduction through improved soil qualities so that you get better groundwater recharge and pollution reduction in that sense through plant management. Sorry. I'm leaning on it now. It's also to promote, oh, there we go, I can see it now. Promote increased localized groundwater recharge because that's what we all need. We need more water to promote improved groundwater quality. It helps the city, in a sense, not have to treat the water as it comes out of the ground to give back to residents for use and to promote green infrastructure and green space improvement. The proposed LID plan, it has a number of criteria within it, which sounds like you want to know about. Plan applicability, it includes demolition. So if you have an existing structure, it includes the demolition of it. You have to mitigate it. It includes new construction and redevelopment. It is for any discretionary project that is submitted for as of January 1, 2023. That is the date that we have, we have decided to put forth, considering this was supposed to be as of July 1, 2015. We just picked the nearest milestone date of January 1. This also includes capital improvement projects that are put forth after that date. So it does apply to City of Los Banos improvement projects. There are two types of standards within it. One is for small projects that handles anything between 2,500 square feet and 4,999 square feet. Regulated projects, which are tracked, is anything above 5,000 square feet. And that is of disturbance, ground disturbance of any kind. A small project, again, demolition, newer redevelopment, includes projects with no net increase of impervious surfacing. So if you are ripping out a parking lot and you are putting it back, you are subject to this. The new construction parking lots I just went over, roadway or sidewalk, that is a big deal, it's an impervious surfacing. It increases the runoff that would have otherwise gone into the dirt. And then detached single-family homes that are not part of a larger plan or development, they are considered to be a small project regardless of size. Then you have regulated projects that's greater than 5,000 square feet. Demo, new redevelopment, projects with no net increase, and a list as, the list is the same as small projects. Exemptions, there is a very long list of them. It is written specifically into the permit requirements put forth by the State Water Board. I'm not going to read them off. This is the big crux of it. The LID Standards Plan, what it does is it is compliance site design measures. You have improving soil quality, stream setbacks or buffers. You do have streams here in Los Banos. Los Banos Creek is the biggest one for you. So when you have projects that get out to there, you will have this as an option, which is a great benefit, to clean the water before it gets to your stream. The next one is tree planting and preservation, rooftop and impervious area disconnection. So it's a rooftop disconnection, like you don't have your downspout from your house that goes directly to the gutter. It actually goes through your lawn, so it infiltrates through your lawn. Porous pavement, vegetated swales, and then rain barrels or cisterns. Those can be either above or below ground. The plan itself is a metric that is put forth by the State Water Board, and it is provided to developers or anybody coming to the counter to provide the information using the spreadsheet. And it can be provided to them both hard copy or digitally for them to enter, just for ease. As part of the Standards Plan is a long-term maintenance plan that the owner of the property must enter into. That way, the city is not responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of whatever the LID standard is. So it takes the onus off of the city and puts it back onto the owner of the property. Implementation, it is going to require a little bit of planning and building department training, just so that they know what they have to tell people when they come to the counter. However, the the change that may or may not bring, this plan mimics the same plan that is in place for almost every municipality in the state of California already. Every surrounding municipality already has this in place. So we are getting developers coming in to the City of Los Banos saying, where is your low-impact development standard? What standard are we being held to? Because they're used to it in every other municipality. So there shouldn't be a very big change for developers or designers. A good portion of the design review staff for the plans that come in, we, as a third party, we already have to do this standard everywhere else. So this is not new to any of us. The whole premise to this is we're getting the City of Los Banos up to code with the State Water Board. There is no fiscal impact to the city on this. And the recommendation from Public Works and from myself is that the city receive this standard and adopt it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do we have any questions from council? I think you're trying, it's just not, yeah, but I I see you over there. I see you over there, so.
My question is, does any of this apply to residential or is?
It's, yes, it's citywide, it's everything.
So are people going to be required to convert from downspouts going under the ground and out to the sewer system?
No, no. This is if you are building something completely new.
Okay.
There there's no need to retrofit. It's if you were going to build, an example I've used elsewhere, you have a large, multi-acreage property, and you want to build a secondary dwelling on it, mother-in-law suite, I don't know, for your kids, something of that nature. And it is between the 2,500 and 4,999 square foot. You would be subject to this. You would have to do mitigation measures. Now, if you were putting in or redoing your 500-square-foot patio in the back of your house, you would not be subject to this. So there are different criteria and different, we'll call them a point system, that you get in the Low Impact Development Calculator that is provided. For rooftop disconnection, you get certain number of points based on how big that disconnection applies to.
So in the past, I I would assume it's still the same way today, when new residential homes are being built, they they are built to slope property either in the backyard or the front yard away from the house so that, you know, water doesn't penetrate the foundation. So I mean, if they're going to have barrels or rain chains or whatever attached to the downspouts, how how is this going to affect? Because it's still going to runoff.
Right, most residential developments now, as they are designed under other municipalities with the standard, they incorporate top lots or retention basins or open green space within the development itself that takes over that runoff reduction equivalent. So instead of it stopping it at the home, that piping system that you have for storm drain would actually go into an open space in a park system, and the water would then go to the park first and go into the grass and then infiltrate the ground there with an outflow release channel on the opposite end, on the downstream end, that if it hit a crucial level, it would then discharge out of there and just go back to the city storm drain system. That's how it's handled most other places.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wilmer.
Thank you, that's very interesting. I have particular interest in, or at least I I did, in in water, wastewater, stormwater, whatever. Having having run three water districts in the last decade, so I I've probably been kind of a pain in the keister for staff since I arrived on the scene, finance and otherwise, okay? So what 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 I hear is, and with your engineering background, is that the flushing through aquifers and and other efforts that are made may have a positive effect on levels of chrome 6, arsenic, et cetera. Do you subscribe? It sounds too good to be true, to tell you the truth, because I'm being told that the range of treatment for chrome 6 alone, now check me out here, thereon, is 30 to 90 million dollars for this community. And I'm saying, wait a minute, there there's just got to be a better way. So we're we're, we have had exploratory meetings with CCID and Grasslands and and other folks that if 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 it makes sense for the city to do, and if it's not too good to be true, that increasing the flow through aquifers may either reduce or eliminate the need for treatment. It, as I say, to me, I'm from Missouri. I mean, it sounds too good to be true. Can you opine on that?
I can't give you anything specific on those constituents. But I do know that by blending into an aquifer or adding cleaner water, stormwater theoretically is cleaner, it comes from the atmosphere, and it's not coming from an industrial pollutant, say Exxon Valdez, as worst case. You're blending with cleaner water into a polluted source. It's a groundwater recharge benefit. It improves the groundwater through dilution. And that's one of the reasons that we do this. And it's also because you have the impact of using specific vegetation that actually help filter a lot of the common urban pollutants that you find in situations now. And so by using the proper vegetation managements, you come through with only having absorbed the zinc from your break pads. That that's a huge problem now. Your excess salts, potentially some of your herbicides, pesticides, insecticides, into these vegetated swales. It helps keep it out of the ground from contaminating soil, contaminating your groundwater. And as you know, that also reduces your cost as a city to have to treat that. Maybe not next year, maybe not in 10 years, but in 50 years for your children. I know that in the community I live in, we have to treat our water to a very different standard because of what's in the ground. And because I understand the water quality reports that come out of my community, I understand the dollar amount. And I wonder if we had done some of these things previously when I was a child, if we would be in the same boat. So by blending the current groundwater situation with cleaner water through green infrastructure as prescribed by the State Water Board, you're helping yourself, your future residents, your own children, and generally the state in in general. So I can't give you specifics on the the chrome 6, but a blended water source from a higher quality to a lower quality helps you dramatically.
Thank you. I I know that.
Thank you, I know that you weren't necessarily schooled on that or prepared for that.
I wasn't prepared for that question, but that is a question that I do understand.
All right, thank you.
All right. Do we have any other? All right, so at this time, I'm open to, if I get a motion for city council resolution number 6598, adopt the post-construction stormwater low-impact development standards plan. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve city council resolution number 6598 as submitted.
Thank you. Can I get a second, Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. All right, moving on to item number 16, consideration of filling city treasurer vacancy by appointment or call for special election. For this, we're going to go to interim finance director Kuhn and city attorney Vaughn.
So as was noted earlier in the evening with Kim's well-earned commendation, this is now vacant. So we have to go through this process of electing a new city treasurer. Now, the city treasurer is kind of a ministry type of position. Finance really handles most of the, well, pretty much all of the transactional reviews and investments and everything that has to do with the custody and compliance of cash and investments. So the city treasurer really is more of an oversight position. So that's why they're only getting $100 to do this. So anyway, we have to go through an election, and we have to fill this within, I think, 60 days? Bill, is that right?
Excuse me, yes, so the code determines what we need to do, and there's two options. Give me a complex. So we have two options. Within 60 days, you're either to fill the vacancy by appointment, which is typically the process that most jurisdictions use, and is typically the process that's been used in the city of Los Banos. The other default is then calling a special election. I believe the next special election would probably not be until June of this year to fill that vacancy. We already have a process in place for applications and brief interviews, and we're suggesting, I think the recommendation is that we do this by appointment, that we advertise the position in the two local newspapers, and that we accept applications over the next 30 days, and then bring those applications to you along with the applicants for you to choose someone to fill this position. That's the least expensive way to go. If you decided to do it by special election, you're talking about an expenditure of $60,000 plus to man the election. So I think it's a pretty straightforward recommendation. Staff party has, for instance, done this before. We have the applications in hand, ready to roll, and there you go. So that's the recommendation. We would be looking at coming back to you probably in the month of January, probably the second meeting in January, once we've collected all of the applications. So that's the recommendation, and Brent and I are here to answer any questions.
Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there's any questions that we need, but I would like, you have a question? Oh, wait. Let her take your question.
Sure.
Yes, just a couple of questions. In the body of the presentation, well, it says, it's the city treasurer's responsibility to ensure the fiduciary responsibilities, that the city meets its fiduciary responsibilities. And also, the current law imposes special duties on the city treasurer, which requires specialized knowledge of municipal investment and banking. The duties of the city treasurer states this in section blah, blah, blah of the California government code. So.
Yes, that is correct.
It's ceremonial, but.
No, no, I'm not saying it's ceremonial, I'm saying that they're really just an oversight position. So yes, they have to have knowledge of investments and custody and credit risk and all of that stuff. So in the application process, it's not like someone can just come in and say, yeah, I balance my checkbook, I'm ready to go. It has, they have to have some background and some knowledge into this, because even though finance is doing all of the work, they are required to have, they have a fiduciary requirement to give oversight to the city regarding your investments, so, yes.
And that's what I wanted to clear up, okay.
Yeah.
So just out of curiosity, if we go with the application process and you're not finding any applicants that meet this criteria, how does that affect our timeline?
So I don't imagine we're going to get a FINRA representative in here, maybe we will, that would be amazing. But within the first few weeks, I'm pretty sure, if they have a general working knowledge of banking, I will bring them up to speed in regards to, you know, commercial paper, corporate bonds, the entire investment policy. So they will have at least some education when they bring their treasurer's report forward to you. So it doesn't have to be, you know, someone who worked on Wall Street or anything like that. It just has to be someone who kind of understands that there's, you know, inflows, outflows within the bank, there's FDIC requirements, and on the investment side, they have to have maybe some little working knowledge. I'm sure people have a Robinhood account or something like that where they've invested in stocks and bonds. So they'll have some working knowledge, hopefully. So, yeah, I don't think that it needs to be an extreme understanding, because we can help them with that. But they do have, since it is a fiduciary requirement, they need to understand that requirement.
Okay, so my question to our legal staff, if for some reason we cannot find a person qualified to meet this criteria, how does this affect our standing if we go through this application process and we have only X amount of days to accomplish something?
It'll default to you needing to adopt a resolution calling a special election.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to reinforce what Brent is saying here by virtue of a real-life example. I was talked into interim city management of a city that I will not name some time ago. The first thing that I hit was 14 months of unsigned treasurer's reports. That should have given me a clue. No, it didn't. I accepted the position because I knew the mayor well, she was a dear friend of mine, and we went from there. What I found, what we found, was that cash had not been reconciled due to a variety of circumstances which should have shown up in those treasurer's reports. I'm absolutely, well, what we had to do was actually ask police officers and firefighters to work while we called them furlough days, in other words, unpaid. We promised and we'd pay them back, and we sure did, okay? But I'm absolutely confident with Brent's history and his proven history. I mean, he was at the centerpiece many years ago of actually saving this jurisdiction from much more serious financial circumstances.
So I guess also, the.
So if you train them, I'm okay.
Yeah, well, and understand that our finance department reconciles cash and investments monthly. We, I mean, we're, I'm looking at this like almost on a bi-weekly basis, because I, like, for instance, you have potentially the Fed raising rates. So I'm asking our FINRA rep, John Williams, like, hey, what's the pricing going to be on corporate bonds in a couple of weeks? And he's saying, well, hold off, because the pricing you might pick up in a couple, maybe like three-quarters of a full basis point on your investment. So it makes a big deal, because we kind of came into this and the investments were very, very conservative. They'll still be conservative, they'll still be in double-A rated everything, and mostly backed by federal and state governments. But we're looking now, going from an environment where 0.25% was considered good, to now we're looking into the six range, right? And that's a huge, 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 especially with the amount of cash currently that the city is holding. And with that, then, you know, comes the, I guess, education for anybody that's going to come in, because they're going to see a considerable amount of investments once they walk in here. And there has to be an education. Hopefully, they'll ask these questions, like, hey, what about this, what about this? But.
Good.
Be sure that the finance department and our internal control structure is set up that that would never happen.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, again, we got to just go through the motion, go through the starting point, get applicants in, obviously, we don't want a special election, we can avoid that, and so go from there. Councilmember Lambert?
Yeah, so I want to go ahead and make the motion for filling the city treasurer vacancy by appointment and start taking applications.
Direct staff to get the process rolling.
To direct staff to get the process rolling.
Do I have a second? Or Councilmember Begonia?
I second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, all right. They have it. This whole blinking light thing in front of me, I'm trying to walk and chew gum, so, sorry, bear with me. All right, so.
Yeah.
Next is item 17, appointment of council members to serve on the selection committees for the following commissions or committees. And I'm going to defer this to our city clerk.
Time of the year where we're accepting applications for the commission vacancies, and you need to go through and pick a council member to sit on each commission interview with the mayor so that you can bring forward a recommendation for appointment. So we used to do a rotating list, but I shared with the mayor the other day that the list kind of during COVID didn't get rotated because people weren't available to sit on the committee, so we tried to find people who were available. So it's up to you on how you want to fill the seats to do the interviews. I can, I think you have the list, I have it too.
Okay.
You can ask for volunteers.
That's where I wanted to start, was just to ask for volunteers, to see who has interest in any of those vacancies and start from there.
So the first one would be the airport advisory commission?
Yep, so we'll start with A, which would be the airport advisory commission. Anyone have any interest in that?
The last time it was Deborah Lewis.
Okay, so who would be next, before we get to a voluntold situation? Oh, Councilmember Lambert is volunteering.
You want to volunteer?
Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem Lambert will take that one.
Can you do it by motion, please?
Yeah, if I could get a motion for Councilmember Lambert to sit on the airport advisory commission. Oh, I'm sorry, I will make that motion for Mayor Pro Tem Lambert to sit on the airport advisory commission. Do I get a second? Second by Jones? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then B, the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee?
Last time it was Mr. Yamas.
So it was District 2? Does anyone? I have two over here. I'm going to, I got Begonia up here first, so, Councilmember Begonia?
Yeah.
Do you want it, is that what you're?
B?
Yes, for B, the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee? Okay. I'll make that motion, do we have a second for that? Councilmember Begonia to sit on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Jones? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? All right, moving down the list, Measure P Committee? Anyone have interest in two?
The appointment is made by the recommendation of the fire chief and the police chief, so we don't need a council member.
Oh, okay. Even better.
That's by ordinance.
I like it. All right. And then item D, Parks and Recreation Commission?
Councilmember Jones sat on that last time.
Okay. And I have, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
You'll take that, okay. So I will make the motion, Councilmember Lewis, to sit on that commission. Do I have a second? Second by Jones? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then item E is the Planning Commission.
Councilmembers are automatically assigned to sit on the committee for applicants from their district, and then the mayor and the mayor pro tem automatically sit on the committee for the applicants for the at-large appointment.
Okay. And then F is the Tree Commission?
Looking back, Councilmember Lewis was on that commission. No, I take that back, Kenneth Lambert was on that commission.
Okay. Does anyone want the Tree Commission? Okay, Councilmember Lewis, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second? Second by Jones? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we are at item 18, which is consideration of the cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 21st, 2022, due to the holiday season. Can I get a motion for this? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation to cancel the council meeting of December 21st.
Thank you, do I have a second? Lambert?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? And then number 19, advisement of public notices, and I understand we have three reports.
Yes. Mr. Mayor and city council, thank you. So our first public hearing notice is for a mobile food vendor. This is for Anna Karen Ordones, doing business as Marisco's El Agua Chilis, located at 402 Washington Avenue, this is where Sorensen's is located. The next is for a mobile food vendor permit. This is for Tio Domiro Gomez, doing business as El Cibord de Mi Rancho at 726 Ice Street. And we have, the last item is a conditional use permit. This is for a Type 41 alcohol license. This is for Noodles Fau you at 435 West Pacheco Boulevard. Can't say that without giggling. Yes, great name. This is going to be located at 435 West Pacheco Boulevard, and this is the previous location of me, so really excited to see that building, yes, to see that building occupied. So these public hearings will be held on Wednesday, December 14th, at 6:00 PM, here in the council chambers by the Planning Commission. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. All right, and then item 20, City Manager Report.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, in light of the proliferation of my comments heretofore, maybe I. heretofore, maybe I ought to just hold open for any questions that you might have, other than to say it's been a, the five months has gone by in a blink of an eye. And so this could well be my last meeting with this council. It's been fun. I'll miss all of you. Keep those cards and letters coming. So I'll stand ready for any questions you might have.
All right, do we have any que, I will say, in the three hours I've worked with you, it's been amazing. So I want to thank you for that. So do we have any questions for our city man?
Eesh.
All right. Yeah, right. All right. And then item 21, report update on Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, San Wicking Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Measure V Committee. And I understand, Councilmember Lewis, you have a few of these.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a report from MCAG at our last meeting. This is in regards to the Cycle III funding that MCAG had given us through SB1 Measure V for our Pioneer Road Improvement. This is a bit difficult for me to put out because it was a bit disturbing for me. We had approximately $1.6 million appropriated to us in the third phase of the Measure V money. Phase one, phase two were already distributed to the city. Each of those phases have to be used up in a three-year period of time. Phase three was not used. And when the former mayor left, one of the first approaches to me by MCAG was, you know, this money might be in jeopardy. And so I was told and kind of assured that it wasn't, and apparently the timelines of discussions that staff had with MCAG was otherwise. With our former city manager, Mr. Penaro, and our city manager was also in on a Zoom meeting with myself and Stacy Guzman, who's the director of MCAG. That was, no, a couple of days ago. Our former city manager was notified of the jeopardy of this money. She said that she shared with us that she had been meeting with staff on a pretty regular basis about the money. But what it came down to is that we did not finish our SEQA process. The money can't be incorporated on this phase three to do SEQA. And they reallocated the money to Merced side. And the reason I'm a bit disturbed because we had a meeting on November the 25th here at the council chambers in regards to that money, and we were asked to reclass that money to give it a different name. Basically, the, and I went back to look at that video, and we were asked to change it from the Pioneer Road Widening Project to the Pioneer Street Completion Project. There was question about why we were moving this from a four-lane highway to a four-lane project to a two-lane project, and only a small section of it being four lanes from Gusvalalta Street going east. Now, I know that we have projects on the books with Mr. Hostedler's business to build houses going, you know, to the south, meeting Pioneer. I'm not sure how far Anderson Homes are going to be going to meet Pioneer Road, but we do have projects on the books that are going to increase the housing. So we've now lost this $1.6 million. And the thing that really disturbed me is that no one came to council to let us know that this money was in jeopardy, but we were asked to change the project. And so it was voted upon at the MCAG meeting, first of my knowledge, and I voted against it, even though technically that money has to be used by June 30th of 2023. And there's no way that we could have gotten our environmental stuff done in SEQA in that time because it generally takes, at the best, about two years to get that through the state of California. So we should have been on this two years earlier in order to keep that million point six. That was a big loss to our city, a great loss to our city. But more importantly, for me, I have to have the ability to trust our staff to tell us when we're in jeopardy about losing money or close to it so that we can make a decision to say, well, is this project worth it? Because I know MCAG, they will, you know, they're going to possibly look at whether or not, if we can't meet this project based on the money that we have left, and I think she shared that with us, is that whether or not they're going to look at taking it all away from us. We worked hard to get this Measure V project on the west side for many years, and I realize that we've had a lot of staff turnover, but somewhere along the line, we lost this one. And I'm not blaming it on everybody sitting here because we've gone through two managers, and they didn't do anything about it, and that was their responsibility to make sure those projects were moving forward so that we wouldn't lose that. We already have a two-lane road on Pioneer now. Pretty much the traffic on Pacheco Boulevard is at a level F, especially on Thursdays and Fridays. I don't even go on Pacheco Boulevard. I will find a surface road to go around to get from one side of town to the other. So this four-lane road would have relieved residents of the city or maybe people traveling through the city to get around a little bit faster to get to the east side of our city and get back on 152. So we, I just want the council to know we've lost that money, and we won't be getting it back. And I don't know if this is the reason why we were asked to vote upon Pioneer to be changed from a road widening to a street completion, because that's all it is now, is a street. And why are we using money to develop this when it's already two lanes? And in the future, we're really going to need four lanes, and it's going to cost us way more to get four lanes done in the future than the two lanes that are being proposed right now. So there's a lot of stuff that didn't get passed on to us from the mayor, from all, you know, different people within the system that should have reported back to us on this project. But a million point six is a lot of money. And to me, it almost felt like the embezzlement that we went through years back where we lost a million point nine. It just, and again, I'm not throwing, you know, any gauntlets down on any one particular person. There were a lot of people involved. We've had a lot of turnover, but our projects still need to move forward. We can't lose sight of that, and we've lost a million point six dollars. So that's my report on MCAG for this week and this month. And I really feel badly for our city because now we are forced to reduce something to what the council intended for it to be. We, the engineering company that is working with the city, they knew about this. They had, in the beginning, they had strict guidelines of dates and things that we had to meet and measures that we had to meet in order to move forward. And I don't know what happened to any of that. It just kind of went to the wayside.
I completely understand your frustration. Do you have anything for PCE or the Valier?
That would have been Mr. Lambert's project to sit on it. I just have MCAG and the air board, and the air board has not met yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have anything for PC? No? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to item 22, city council member reports. We're going to start with Councilman Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to congratulate our newcomers, Mr. Begonia, Mr. Yanis. Look forward to working with you gentlemen throughout this next year. And I think you did a good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Move on to Councilmember Begonia?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm excited and honored to be up here with all of you, and this is quite the experience for the first time. I don't know if anyone at home will watch the, to the three-hour and 15-minute mark on YouTube, but I look forward to working for the city and the citizens and doing great things. And hopefully at the next council meeting, I have more to say. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
I, too, would like to welcome our new mayor, Paul Yanis, to the dais, as well as our new council member for District Two, Doug Begonia. It's great to see you up here. Thank you.
And Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to our new council member and the mayor for your election, and I look forward to working with both of you. First, I want to just thank former council member Yamas for his dedication and service to the city in District Two, and I wish him well as he moves forward in serving as the County of Merced's Veteran Services Officer. Today is recognition and remembrance of the attack on Pearl Harbor, December 7, 1941, which catapulted us into World War II. And as described by President Roosevelt, this is a day which will live in infamy. And so I just wanted to bring forth that today is the day that Pearl Harbor was attacked. I want to thank Captain Daniel Freeman and to our fire chief for giving us an engine, for the Christmas parade. It was a bit different because we didn't know if it was going to rain or not rain, and certainly, you know, I had concerns about protecting him because we need to have our staff not get sick and be available for duty. So it was a bit different and enjoyable. I got a chance to toot the horn a lot because people were out there giving me the pump, saying, hey, give us the sound. So it was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed riding with him on the engine. So thank you, chief, for making that available. Yesterday, I understand, according to the newspaper that we receive, IHOP opened, and I hope, you know, there's going to be a planned event for perhaps a ribbon cutting with the city or the chamber so that the community can come out and celebrate. I didn't know that it was opening, and, you know, it was in my districts, but I'm glad that they're now open and ready for business. And I think the last thing I'd like to maybe request is, I'm hoping that in the ARPA money that we have, if there's any additional funds in there to help with the animal shelter, the grant that we received today from UC, I think it was UC Davis, was really, I was ecstatic about that, to help with spay and neutering. But if there's any additional funds in that ARPA that we can dedicate and help our animal shelter move forward to make things better, I would really appreciate that. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I guess I'm the last one. So, right, day one, day one. Got a lot to do in the next few years. First things first, I do want to thank some special guests that joined us tonight. I want to thank our district attorney-elect, Silvero. She was in the audience tonight. I'm glad she came to support us. Ryan Heller from Adam Gray's office was here. Chief of Police Jason Headen from the city of Turlock were here. I had no clue about the ownership group of the Grizzlies giving me a jersey, so I want to thank them for doing that. Supervisor Silvera was in attendance tonight, and so, you know, one of the things that my job up here is, you know, just to read stuff and push buttons now, really, my job up here is just one word, and it's unity. I'm here to bring our city together. To city staff, I've been one of you for 13 years before, and I'm here to support you any way I can so my phone doesn't shut off. I know yours does, hopefully. But yes, feel free, I am at your disposal, whatever I can do to help and support our city staff. That's primary goal of mine. And then to the council, all of you have earned my respect, and I look forward to these years together. We may not agree on everything, and I'm sure we won't, and that's okay, but our job is to communicate to the community that we're willing to work together. And so I hope that's the goal that we meet these next two years. So with that being said, that's all I have in report. I also, by the way, would probably have to sleep on the couch if I didn't thank my wife and my kids for coming and joining us tonight, so I'm glad they're here to do this with us as well. So that's all I have. So I understand now we will adjourn and go into closed session. Oh, yes, sorry. Item 23 will be closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to 54956.9B, and I'm assuming that's the government code, one potential case. 23B, public employment title interim city manager pursuant to government code section 54957. And C, public employment city manager recruitment pursuant to government code section 54957. With that, we will adjourn. Oh, oh, no. Yep. Not that way? No. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll adjourn when we come out. See, rookie, rookie move. There's no reportable action at this time. We're going to adjourn the meeting at 10:32 p.m.